For our July 1st. Happy fiscal year 14, 2014. So bear with us. We're gonna start by getting the warrants signed and have a chance to review them here. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 recorded devices, audio, and one video recording device.
Thank you.
It's taken us a little longer this evening to get the bills paid because there's extra warrants due to the changing of the fiscal year. So at this time, in two weeks from now, I may be hopefully back on a single set of warrants. Just looking over the expense report, go on the email, and notice that the finance committee here should be pretty smooth as far as changes transfers from the reserve fund.
I think it will only be the veteran act that's local.
Do we have a big bank?
No, we do not have a big bank. That's a state surcharge that's deducted before we give our check from the state, and I talked to the accountant. That one doesn't have to be changed. And then there's the retirees' benefits, one that I talked to the town treasurer, that one also is a benefit, but does not have to be made up because it's a fund that money comes into as well as goes out, and what happens is extracted.
There you go. Since we've got Dwayne here, we skip around just a bit and go over the minutes and not hold Dwayne up. He's already had an assessors meeting tonight, I take it?
Yep.
So Dwayne's gonna talk to us from the buildings committee on a pre-town hall use application discussion.
I have been asked to propose some questions about a possible combined use between Town Hall and Community Hall for a, like an Oktoberfest, or it's kind of a Polish celebration, celebrating the Polish families that established in Town of Ashfield. There are some insurance issues. The Community Hall doesn't really have a large liability policy. One of the questions is, is this something that can be combined with a writer on Ashfields? It is considered a combined cultural event. I know some of them are, as I probably once before were asked about having gear. They want to serve alcohol, which, not in Town Hall, it's no way. And in turn, it's brought up another question to me, is even if they have it down there, I think they're required to have a one-day liquor license or permit if they're gonna sell alcohol.
This is the note I've got here from Lester that I'm talking about the Polish events.
Yeah, yeah. This is, so there's, seeing that I'm handling applications, like, these are questions that I really didn't have an answer to. These are somewhat for decisions. So before the Community Hall goes through the whole application thing, this is kind of preliminary, is it possible to be able to arrange this so that the Community Hall and the Ashfield Hall would split the profits from the event?
Lester, you wanna give us a little more background on that?
Yeah, a little more background. Very late 1800s, early 1900s, a number of powers in Eastern Europe came to Ashfield for a number of reasons. And they were from Poland, Ukraine, Czechoslovakia, Austria, Hungary, Eastern European countries. We at the Community Hall would like to have a cultural event to celebrate the arrival and the legacy of these families and how it contributed to the town. We serve food, ethnic foods, in the Community Hall from 12:00 to 2:00, or 12:00 to 1:00 on Sunday, October 27th of this year. So the food we serve in the Community Hall and the folk band will start at 2:00 and go until 5:00. And we are contracting with a band called Eddie Orman Folk Orchestra. Now, considering we have a capacity of 100 people in the Town Hall and in the Community Hall, we have more bands than we have Hall. And so we'd like to be able to bring it to the Town Hall and share more of the community. And in the process, share the profits with the Town Hall Building Restoration Fund, and we'd also use the profits for the Community Hall maintenance and restoration. And we do not plan to have alcohol.
Okay, that's, oh, whatever. Now, this consultant, it goes to be in both places?
No, no. The food will be served in the Community Hall, and the band will be here beginning at 2:00.
So it would be in both places?
Yeah. The food would be at the Community Hall?
Food would be at the Community Hall, the band would be here.
The band would be here.
But the ticket, or price of admission, would be one event?
Not necessarily. I think we may split the ticket, or the food ticket, or the band.
But the event is being sponsored by the Town of Ashfield in conjunction with the Ashfield Community Hall? Is that cosponsored?
Well, sponsored by the Ashfield Community Hall, who dealt on the town.
But for that to fall under our insurance umbrella, it really has to be a town sanctioned event, right? I mean, I would assume. Mary, is that a question for you?
It would be a question we'd probably do, um, ask our own, but that's a possibility that if it is sponsored by both the Community Hall and the town, it's one way, and if it's done differently, it would be a different question.
What I could say is, if the, so the band was sponsored by the Town of Ashfield, and the food was sponsored at the Community Hall, that would keep, even though the proceeds would come behind and be swept, it would, it would have just the, just the dance and the band connected to the town. So it might be easier to have a town writer just for this Ashfield area.
Would leave all the food service out of it.
Yeah, then the food would be picked up by the Community Hall, and what goes down in would fall under the Community Hall's liability policy. So it wouldn't have this conflict of two different places to cover, because the Town Hall liability really wouldn't cover down there, and theirs would really cover up here. So if it can be kept split, then there's, it's a, it's a one thing event, but it's two places covered by two sponsors.
Paul?
The case they're making at the moment for splitting the money out of the account...
Okay. You know, I mean, had it, was it an hour and a half?
Yes.
I wish it not to be expensive that one day.
That is, that is for reprogramming, so the radios would do as well. Because I was gonna say, isn't that, that a count?
That a count?
Yes.
That count will be forever.
And we'll be encumbered because that work will go on. We need to have medical work. We want to ask this question, is there something in there for 13? When you were asking the question about the transportation, was it 13 or 14 you were...
He was, I believe he was asking about the FY 13...
This one?
Yeah.
Oh, right. I was gonna say, I didn't...
No, no, no.
That's okay, that's all right. I didn't think so, and I thought, oh, here it is. The case they're making at the moment for splitting and have the dance here so that the event could be covered as we do for any other event, the dance here, makes a certain amount of sense. I would expect that the food is going to happen more like it does at Fall Festival, so it's calm, shall we say, people reading, but they're coming and going, and then, you know, it's, people are dancing, somebody can sell their phone, all that kind of stuff would be adequately covered by the application form we have, I would think. And then how the monies are distributed up is something we're trying to work on.
The way the application is now, it's requiring a fairly substantial liability coverage from whoever is using the town hall, all right? This is what, overall, we're trying to minimize that, that cost.
Well, I guess the piece of information that I would need is to get ahold of our insurance agent and find out for such an event, for a one-day coverage, if we could cover the Town, uh, the Community Hall as well as the Town Hall, and just find out what that cost is.
Sure.
I mean, maybe less than $100, it could be.
Yeah.
If we, if we described, I mean...
I don't see why it should be a problem that we've had events going on here for years without having any of this. All right, so, now the new policy, this insurance thing has been one of the main focuses, which, there are circumstances that what's being asked for is a one and three million dollar policy. Well, a smaller amount, it's just a pub event with no fees, they're down to the point they can't cover that liability expense up to themselves. So this is where possibly being aware of the town's insurance, if these little events can be a smaller amount or a rider for the one day, or the event, onto the town's, so that the town is covered completely. So this is, I'm stuck in the middle of this, you know? People are looking at it, wondering, well, if you, if you have to have this, then we can't have the event there because we can't afford it. So somewhere we have to find a way, you know, if there was a, if you're having an event and there's a $20 ticket, hey, there's income to, to cover a policy for whoever's using it.
For, for the end of October, you know, an afternoon event, like this, you could get certainly way more crowd than the Community Hall.
Well, either the way I look at it, the Community Hall is admittedly inaccessible. There's lots of parking, maybe even Main Street, but there is the, there's more space on Main Street, and usually the church parking lot can be, accommodate for a lot of parking there. I mean, these are just things that would, it would make sense that to have this cultural event and actually have it in the center, the bulk of it in center of town.
Do we as a board, I know I don't, have any objective to having the band in the dance here where we can sell that many more tickets? I mean, there's a population of people out there that like folk bands, so we may draw and, you could conceivably use up all the tickets of which this space, I presume upstairs, can hold.
Down there, you're looking at 100, 100 people in the upper hall.
This is kind of preliminary. Is it possible to be able to arrange this so that the Community Hall and the Ashfield would split the profits from this event?
Lester, you want to give us a little more background on that?
Yeah, a little more background. Very late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, a number of families in Eastern Europe came to Asheville for a number of reasons. And they were from Poland, Ukraine, Czechoslovakia, Austria, Hungary, Eastern European countries. We at the Community Hall would like to have a cultural event to celebrate the arrival and the legacy of these families and how it contributed to the town. We serve food, ethnic foods, in the Community Hall from twelve to two, or twelve to one, on Sunday, October twenty seventh of this year. So the food is served in the Community Hall, and the folk band will start at two, and go until five. And we are contracting with a band called Eddie Orman Folk Orchestra. Now, considering we have a capacity of one hundred people in the Town Hall and in the Community Hall, we have more bands than we have Hall. And so we'd like to be able to bring it to the Town Hall and share more of the community. And in the process, share the profits with the Town Hall Building Restoration Fund, and we'd also use the profits for the Community Hall maintenance and restoration. And we do not plan to have alcohol.
That's, that's, oh, whatever. Now, this consultant, it goes again to, to other.
That's all.
Well, then I can be eating the polka.
Well, we can have weapons. No, it's, it's, I think it's a great time for the community hall. And with each one of you has taken the liberty of reproducing some pages from Nashville, which goes into the background of the whole town.
And I have a few.
A couple. Lester, this would be in both places?
No, no. The food will be served in the Community Hall, and the band will be here beginning at two.
So it would be in both places?
Yeah. The food would be at the Community Hall.
Food would be at the Community Hall, the band, the band would be here.
But the ticket, or price of admission, would be one event?
Not necessarily. I think we may split the ticket, or the food ticket, or the band.
But the event is being sponsored by the Town of Asheville in conjunction with the Asheville Community Hall? Is that cosponsored?
Well, sponsored by the Asheville Community Hall, who helped on the town.
But for that to fall under our insurance umbrella, it really has to be a town sanctioned event, right? I mean, I would assume. Mary, is that a question for you?
It would, it would be a question we probably would want to ask our mother. But that's a possibility, that if it is sponsored by both the Community Hall and the Town, it's one way, and if it's done differently, it would be a different question.
What I could, what I could say is, if the, so the band was sponsored by the Town of Asheville, and the food was sponsored at the Community Hall, that would keep, even though the proceeds would come behind and be swept, it would, it would have just the, just the dance and the band connected to the Town. So it might be easier to have a town rider just for this to be here.
Would leave all the food service out of it.
Yeah, and the food would be picked up by the Community Hall, and what goes down there would fall under the Community Hall's liability. So you wouldn't have this conflict of, of two different places to cover, because the Town Hall liability really wouldn't cover down there, and, and theirs would really cover up here. So if it can be kept split, then there's, it's a, it's a one thing event, but it's two places covered by two sponsors.
Paul?
The case they're making at the moment for splitting and having the dance here so that the event could be covered, as we do for any other event, the dance here, makes a certain amount of sense. I would expect that the food is going to happen more like it does at Fall Festival, so it's calm, shall we say, people reading, but they're coming and going, and then, you know, it's, people are dancing, somebody can sell their phone, all that kind of stuff would be, would be adequately covered by the application form we have, I would think. And then how the monies are distributed up is something we're going to work on.
The way the application is now, it's quite, it's requiring a fairly substantial liability coverage from whoever is using the Town Hall, all right? This is what, overall, we're trying to minimize that, that cost.
Well, I, I guess the piece of information that I would need is to get a hold of our insurance agent and find out for such an event, for a one-day coverage, if we could cover the Town, the Community Hall as well as the Town Hall, and just find out what that cost is.
Sure.
I mean, maybe less than a hundred dollars, it could be.
See, that's.
If we, if we described, I mean.
I, I don't see why it should be a problem, that we've had events going on here for years without having any of this. All right, so, now the new policy, this insurance thing has been one of the main focuses, which, there are circumstances that what's being asked for is a one and three million dollar policy. Well, a smaller amount, it, it's just a pub event with no fees, they're down to the point, they can't cover that liability expense up through themselves. So this is where possibly being aware of the Town's insurance, if these little events can be a smaller amount or a rider for the one day, or the event, onto the Town's, so that the Town is covered completely. So, this is, I'm stuck in the middle of this. You know, people are looking at it, well, if you, if you have to have this, then we can't have the event there, because we can't afford it. So somewhere we have to find a way, you know, if there was a, if you're having an event and there's a twenty dollar ticket, hey, there's income to, to cover a policy for whoever's using it.
For, for the end of October, you know, an afternoon event, like this, you could get certain way more crowded in the Community Hall.
Well, either, the way I look at it, the Community Hall isn't medically accessible. There's lots of parking, maybe even Main Street, but there is the, there's more space on Main Street, and usually, the church parking lot can be, accommodate a lot of parking there. I mean, these are just things that would, it would make sense that, to have this cultural event and actually have it in the center, the bulk of it in center of town.
Do we as a board, I know I don't, have any objective to having the band in the dance here, where we can sell that many more tickets? I mean, there's a population of people out there that like folk bands, so we may draw, and you could conceivably use up all the tickets, of which this space, I presume upstairs, can hold.
You're, down there, you're looking at a hundred, a hundred people in, in the upper hall. Here, you've got a capacity of four hundred and twenty-five seats. If you look at the difference in the revenue.
Well.
If it's down there, Town Hall is going to get in running.
We've got, we've got a refurbished dance floor up there that was, that's being kept just for that.
These are, these are where this money would be ear-tagged to, you know, help preserve the floor and, and any other things that are beginning to deteriorate around here, like the steeple again, it's obviously something that's got to be attended to soon, or.
We discussed that a little bit last week. Ron, what are your thoughts?
Well, I, I think we should keep this separate, personally. The reason I think so is because I don't want to be affiliated with having a Town Sponsored event in a non-handicap accessible building. I think we could run into some issues there.
Awesome.
And let the Asheville Community Hall deal with their event, and we deal with ours under the auspice of celebrating our townwide diversity, or something like that. And I don't have an issue with it, I think we need to do that, more of that kind of celebration, and I think it's a great idea. My big concern is on expense. If there, I, I would love to have some sort of arrangement with the Community Hall, that if it's negative, not a plus, that they'll reimburse the Town, because we don't have an expense line item for this at all. I know everyone's talking about this being a money making thing, but I'm concerned, we haven't budgeted anything, and I don't know if we would get it out of if participation wasn't there. Those are my thoughts.
My, my feeling is, the name of the, of the band is going to be quite, they're probably one of the most popular Polish bands in the area. And if this is advertised out there, you're going to have a lot of people from all over.
They advertise it, they advertise it for a month on Saturday morning.
Okay.
On the radio. On the radio, there'll be all kinds.
Non-Ashville people in.
What, Lester, what, what was the Community Hall's use of the proceeds? Was it a specific use, or was it?
Say again?
We were talking about splitting it between the Town Hall and, and the Community Hall. What, did the, did the Community Hall Association have a specific use for the proceeds?
Oh, yes. The maintenance and improvements of the Community Hall. Very similar to the Town Hall.
There's two old fire furnaces down there that really need to be upgraded. There's a number of things. Over the last three or four years, the Community Hall's generated funds to install windows on, get the outside cleaned and painted, they've got the inside paint re-done and painted, and this is where their share of this income will go, to, to improve. The kitchen was already done, the floor, kitchen is up and inspected and certified as a true usable kitchen for, for anybody, caterers or anything like that, to come in and actually be able to use that kitchen on a commercial basis, sort of, for the recovery. So, yeah, basically where this, that money would go.
I probably would be the last one to, to think of your concern as far as the handicap accessibility at the Community Hall. I got to imagine that that's one of the things that they'd want to be working on as far as improvements and that sort of thing. But, here, I, I often think that some of the things that go on here should go on at the Community Hall, if there's, you know, other spaces than what's right here. I want to leave, any further thoughts on how to approach this?
I think the idea is fine. I think if they do an application to, to use the space, is that what you, at least that's what I would think is, they do an application to use the space, just like other people do. I don't recall the exact cost of having that rider, but maybe that fee, assuming there's enough money generated, could come out of there, pay for that, and that would allow the coverage, and having it, I mean, they could have it here separately, but I think it's nice to do it jointly with the Town. I mean, they could do the whole thing separately, but doing it with the Town and actually, some of the proceeds coming to the Town Hall building would, fun would be good, so maybe we don't need the waiver at all, because it's a town event in Town Hall, we don't normally get a rider for that.
Lester, so it's like two different. How, how married would you be to having the food at the Community Hall? Because you could have food in this hall and then go upstairs for the dance. Right? We do allow food in the lower hall. They need to have it all in one location.
It could be prepared down there and brought up and served here. I think, I think the whole, whole idea of having it down there is because there, there's tables, the kitchen is right there, so that you're not, you know, there are your dishes, you can go right into the kitchen, and they're dealt with, and they're put away. If you, if you sort of put here, you're going to have to prep it, you're going to bring it up here, and you're going to have to pack it up and ship it back down there. It's more cultural friendly to, if the group goes there, to be able to sit down, company at a table, and, and then relax for a while, and then come up here for the music and dance.
Lester?
This also allows us to serve food in the elegant blue room upstairs, in the Hall, so that we can accommodate more people upstairs and downstairs.
Very good point. The capacity's a hundred or so upstairs and what downstairs?
Maybe one hundred and twenty downstairs.
Yeah, but there's more capacity downstairs than there actually is upstairs.
Well, wouldn't it be appropriate for our first step is to contact the insurance agent? I mean, we're, we're figuring on this for the end of October, so we've got plenty of time.
That will be upon us shortly.
No, 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 and I'm not talking about Billy Dowling, but, you know, we can find out what the insurance liability would be to, to put an umbrella over the Community Hall, just so we have that information.
So let me, let me ask you, so, along, just a few phone calls maybe. Do you want to, do you want to have me ask both ways? Because I'm not sure that they will put an umbrella over, I assume you have a separate insurance policy, not with, with municipal insurers.
With a private insurer.
With a private insurer.
And it does indicate that we are covered, those spaces that we rent.
So, I, I'm, I'm just thinking they may not be willing to throw their insurance over a building they don't have information on, don't know, don't.
To be a national insurer.
So, I, I think, I think everybody's missing something. If this is.
Two separate.
Covered in two separate places, then there's not an issue of one covering the other.
Right, I would be checking.
The Community Hall will be covering the Community Hall, and Asheville will just be covering Town Hall. One won't overlap on the other.
But it would be nice to have an answer on it anyways, an inquiry, just make an inquiry if you had a Town Sponsored.
For future.
I mean, is it, is it going to be advertised jointly, that both, you know, the Town of Asheville and the Asheville Community Hall, you know, I mean. You're going to say, you're going to want to, when you advertise it, you're going to say that the proceeds are going to be used for, for folk, folk places.
Although the wording could say, food at the Community Hall, sponsored by the Community Hall, a dance at Town Hall, sponsored by the Community Hall, and Town, and Town of Asheville.
On the point. You could have folks just coming in for the dance, you could have others that are having lunch at the White House, or else, for the Community Hall.
So, there's, there's two different, really two different companies. There's, there's food, and then there's a dance. And some people, like, like Lester said, some people just come for music and dance, you know, they're not even going to bother with food, or, or they not going to the Community Hall.
So if it's cosponsored Town Hall and the Community Hall, on this location, we don't need that extra ride and that extra chairs, it's just already there, which eliminates the expense in terms of being able to divide the profits among two places.
And sell two sets of tickets.
Yeah, right.
You buy the ticket to eat, you buy a ticket for the dance.
And see how you can dance, to folk, without a few, kielbasa and paroles.
That's almost impossible.
And, I, I think asking the insurance company this question is good, because it may come up again, and if we find out now, if it does come up again for something else, we'll have the answer, that's all. So, I, I think.
So, polling the board, do we have a problem with having this dance upstairs at the end of October, on October twenty seventh?
Sunday afternoon.
Sunday afternoon. Sunday afternoon. We don't seem to have any problem with that. Should we make a motion and go on?
Well, you're going to have, you're going to have an application come before you, probably soon.
Let's just do some research on the insurance, in case it comes up again.
Yeah, that way.
Got the whole summer of nothing.
You won't have to hold on to this anymore. I know you guys like the hold on thing, but.
Well, the issue now would be, you know, that we agree to, to do something, the music portion of this with the band jointly here at the Town.
Want to make that motion?
Sure. I move that we agree to host in conjunction, the Town of Asheville in conjunction with the Community Hall, a Polka Fest for October twenty seventh, two thousand and thirteen. It's a Sunday between two and five P M, that part of the function can help here in Town Hall.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Sounds like we beat it for tonight. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? That's you now.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for having the, taking the effort to try to get something like that going, that's great. Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you for working a couple things out, making my life easier.
It wasn't all that easy. While we're working on appointments, I see Alan Rice is here. And I didn't expect you to make it, so we want to take it while you're here.
That's very kind of you.
That's the kind of people we are.
Good for you. Well, I feel you were in the day, draft, section nine, finding action plans relating to the Select Board, realizing it's short notice for you to review it, but wanted to be here to answer any questions you might have regarding this piece of, this open space red document that we're trying to finish.
And there's, what is the deadline on that? We keep talking about, but I don't know.
The deadline is through the end of this month, through the end of July.
Don, we can get an extension on that.
You can?
Yes, I thought, we, on that, we can get an extension.
Do we, but do we need it? Are we close?
Well, my concern, we're close, and I think we can get everything done, but my concern is there may not be enough time for review. And the two thousand and eight conditional approval document in that stage was reviewed and signed off by three entities, which included the Select Board, the Planning Board, and Franklin Regional Council of Democrats. So my concern is that we, I think we can get it all done, but I'm not sure if there'd be enough time to review it all. So, even an extension of two or three weeks might be beneficial. And I'd like to finish up this as soon as possible.
Is this draft that you emailed us today, do we allow that? Yeah. This is, is this pretty much copy what the prior plan was?
Yes, I've simply isolated any action steps and objectives that were listed in the two thousand and eight version. So what you see there is what's in the two thousand and eight version. So I believe in my email I said that the Select Board should be reviewing this, you should be revising, maybe improving, maybe adding, as you see there.
Well, it's two short pages.
Yes, it is.
Could we maybe go, at least go over it the first time now, while Alan's? Oh, I got it. Don, can I say something? Why don't you move up so we can, you don't have to shell?
This goes with, it's a multi-hazard litigation plan for Town of Asheville.
Multi-hazard litigation plan?
This plan, that's just an introduction. This plan's got a hundred and twenty-seven pages on it. That's just beneath the notion part of it. But we, as you see, we started it last year, especially with our community rules, and I asked Alan to do it on, on the open space plan. But as you can see, it's, a lot of things that, that, this is very close to being done. All I got to do is change the wording, except for what he's asked us to do, what Alan's got, I'm not sure.
A hundred and twenty-seven pages.
Plus what happens.
And this is, just has to do with the open space.
Well, he's talking about.
The, right.
The litigation.
So it's, it's two different subjects.
It's got to go all together, and you have to sign the whole thing, Fercog has to sign the whole thing, and Miima has to sign the whole thing before it is completed.
And what does it guess? I guess that is always the thing that I'm not terribly clear about.
Well, they say in the plan that, it's just like living here, if we don't have this, we might not be able to do the grants. Just like everything else. They did do it in two thousand and five, and if we bring this one up, then it's good until two thousand and eighteen, before it has to be redone again.
So you filled out quite a few grants for generators and so on and so forth. I mean, did they always ask that you refer to this?
Yeah, they do. They always ask for the number of this one. Whatever. If we don't have the number, I don't know about that, I really don't know. It's, we just don't know.
Well, the fire department and emergency manager, and we've had pretty good luck, seems like getting grants.
Yeah, we have.
Various different sizes, so. So anyway, let's go through this draft that Alan sent us. It has a list of goals, protect the natural systems that support wildlife and provide clean water and air. Promote active farming and forest management. Do you want to go through each one of these goals and, and just kind of, I mean, beyond that first goal, it's a little wordy, and I don't know if it really says anything. I mean, it seems like all the wetlands protection and everything else, all those laws, the, that pertain to the Conservation Commission and all the other, do the same thing.
Well, I mean, suppose that's true. However, it seems to me that, that regardless of this promoted in this particular document in order to accomplish what the document needs to accomplish, which is twofold, to guide the organization of this town, for making decisions regarding land use policy, and such, same as the mitigation, multi-hazardous mitigation plans, to secure grants, conservation grants, to help achieve some of the goals and objectives. So, I, I think you're right, I mean, we have some state laws in effect that I can I mean, we have some state laws in effect, like the Protection River Protection Act, but nonetheless, it needs to be stated in here under goal number one. These are pretty straightforward. These were in the plan already, so I don't think there's a need to tweak these or to revise the goals. Promote active farming and forest management. This is a farming community, it makes sense. There's a lot of forests around here, it makes sense to manage the forests as best we can. Protect Ashville's cultural heritage and scenic resources, that's goal number three.
We were just talking about that moments ago.
Okay, I mean, there's a lot of history, a lot of culture. It's taken 250-plus years to, to the character of this area to develop, so that's important. Just about every bridge that you see around here is pristine. There's, there's very, there's a lot of aesthetics here, nice views. Goal four, promote recreation that is rooted in the rural landscape. There's a lot of opportunities for recreational activity. They can occur, you can have more rural settings such as ours. And finally, goal five, promote some policies and planning procedures that allow the town to grow in a way that respects rural resources and channels growth to locations where it makes the most sense. So just sensible planning is what that amounts to. We're not seeing a whole lot of growth in this town, but that doesn't mean that will happen in the future, and we wanna be prepared for it. So listed under these goals, there's various objectives. So if you look at the first objective, it says 1A, which means it's.
Related, related to goal one?
Related to goal number one. And it's the first one that was listed in 2008 version of the plan that had the select board attached to it. Now, when these, these action steps and objectives were put together in 2008, the select board and most other, other boards and commissions in the town, made up of different folks. Times change, there may be different directions that various boards and commissions feel they need to move in in order to best represent the best interests of the town. However, I just copied it verbatim. This is what was in the 2008 version. So this is what you need to review and decide whether this still makes sense to pursue from the select board perspective.
Pursue opportunities to link protected land and potential resource areas with greenways along important river and stream corridors and other wildlife corridors. So identify gap parcels, parcels that wouldn't be protected possibly between two areas that are protected?
Right. Maybe there might be an interest that a private landowner might have to say, yeah, I can put my piece, a part of my piece into some kind of restriction to create that link. Creates the protection of the resource, whether it's the wildlife or recreational use. So that's something that in 2008, select board felt that that had some meaning to it.
And then coordinate with neighboring towns on corridor management plans.
Right, and since it's neighboring towns, it's, I think there's a logical fit there for the select board to have to oversee that, since you're dealing with other municipalities.
Now, what you know, referring to the conservation commission?
Well, that seems to make sense, and in some cases you could wanna be working with other boards and commissions of the town, such as the Conway, to pursue these, these objectives.
Alan, how do you, it's one thing to fill out the objectives with the best interest of the town in head, but how do you do it? Okay, say you change it to 2013, end of 2018. Is it your intention that the select board would actually build a playing field and say, you know, I'm interested in this corridor along this river? What are you, what are you guys doing along those lines?
You could just, I, I'm not really certain, you know, I, I copied this, I read it. Seems like the letter could go out to various other neighboring towns. Say, this is a, this is an objective we have for trying to, you know, link our management plans so that there's some continuity with how we protect our resources.
Now, I can see it from the South River point of view, that's the Lake River, right? That with Conway, you know, because of the mitigation and the potential hazard to them being downstream, maybe these things kind of tie together at that point, you know, not only from an environmental point of view, but also from a hazard mitigation point of view. So that makes plenty sense to me. I just don't know who's the advocate driving this thing forward, you know?
Well, it's mainly it's the national tourism administration that's the ones that are behind this, same as they were behind the, for the grant that I had due last fall to get us up to par in the dam, that whole dam situation all the way through to the river. And when I talked to Conway, the Conway, he said, we didn't worry about it. The dam goes up, it was a cow. And that's when I got the Conway. So that's what I don't have. And he rejected it. So it's, and now it's just, this is just another plan that we have to get to for the overall town instead of just the dam.
But if I understand it right, we were looking at some grants relative to the dam in the last year or so, and because we didn't have this open space plan complete with the objectives identified, they kind of passed us by.
Well, they, this plan here is still effective for 2008 until the 31st of July this year.
Okay. The one that you handed out.
So what this is saying is that, that we need to be aware of things in our own town and, and that if it connects with another town, it doesn't, it could actually have a multiplier effect, that, you know, we need to be aware of those things.
Yep.
Much the same as if somebody was selling their agricultural preservation rights, right? Doing an APR and they were on a town line, you know, both towns would be concerned.
Right. It's a, it's a more holistic approach too. It's looking at corridors and ranges that cross town boundaries.
Did you note to the conservation commission, you know, I think, I really don't think that is necessary to expand on that because I can think of the conservation commission, the agricultural commission, the planning board, the zoning board, all those things.
Okay.
So.
So you can strike that out if you wanted to. That's your prerogative.
Okay, 2B.
So, goal number two, which is promote active farming and forest management, promote long-term forest management and sustainable harvesting of forest resources. Someone at some points made the suggestion that, with this objective, that a forest management committee could be established. Possibly combined with ag comm oversight and possibly involving conservation mission. I don't really have any thoughts on that. This is what the select board, this was entered into the previous document.
I mean, forestry is pretty well regulated, I'm mistaken about.
It's forming, it's forming yet another committee, I don't know if it's necessary. The other thing that you have to remember about these type of documents is they are trying to address pressures from growth and development. We don't see a whole lot of that in this area. But again, that's not to say it couldn't happen in the future. So some of these may not be permanent at this time. But since it was labeled for select board, we're leaving it to the select board to work on this, to decide whether or not.
Oh, yeah. You have any thoughts on that? I mean, I know we haven't had a lot of time to look at it since, you know, we emailed it at noon, but.
Yes. You did, that's it.
But about.
It weighed 127 pages.
Most of that forest management, a lot of what happens with the cesser through the 61A and 61B's and all that stuff, if I've got them right, who's first?
Yes, you do, absolutely.
That seems to be where they get into doing that, now promoting more people to put more of their land into forest management. Seems to be the other one, they usually come to us because they want to, but I suppose maybe some people don't know about 61s and 61bs.
If they can, if they got any number of acres and they look at the tax bill, they probably would want to.
Right.
But that's the only thing that I, I just think the forestry industry is so regulated. I mean, you have to have forestry plans and all of that. But as far as putting something new about the agricultural commission, I would think that would be a normal hook there. I mean, forestry is agriculture, jerk.
I mean, I don't have any problem with the goal, promote active farming and forest management. I'm okay with that.
Isn't there a time, maybe 100 years or so, when there was more open space? And so there are perhaps more forested areas than there used to be? So it ties nicely with agriculture in some ways.
Thousands of acres of woods with stone walls running through them. Somebody built those.
Somebody wanted to take the wood street.
That's right, that's right. Okay, you wanna go to 3B? I mean, we don't need to make these changes tonight, but it's good to have a discussion with you about what's going on.
Well, 3B, again, it's under, this is, sorry, this is the third goal, which is protecting Ashville's cultural heritage and scenic resources. Pursue protection of historic buildings and landscapes. I did not indicate here that this is, was also listed with the historical commission. Advocate for state-sponsored regional heritage landscape survey. The heritage landscape survey is a state-sponsored program. I believe the pilot program is also started in conjunction with trustees of reservations. This, I believe, my personal belief is this is more geared towards communities that may be feeling pressures from growth and development. But it's basically designed to ask the question that what constitutes community in character? If anybody in this room is asked, how would you depict the town that you live in? You know, somebody say, well, I like the historic buildings, I like the neighborhood I live in, I like the lake and the rivers and streams. And all that constitutes basically a sense of place. You know, this is the special, unique community that we live in, and the way we live, what we do in our community, interacting with the natural environment, that constitutes what they call heritage landscapes. So whether or not it's pertinent or it's needed, I'm still reviewing with the historical commission whether they think it's something worthy. Nonetheless, in the 2008 version, it adds select.
So when it talks about heritage landscape, you're thinking of a broader landscape than I normally think of. What I'm just thinking of, you're talking about the neighborhoods and that sort of thing where I'm thinking of looking up onto Peter Hill.
Well, that could be harder too. That's what make the, make the community special to you is looking up on Peter Hill or walking down Main Street. It's, it's again, what makes this, what gives this area a sense of place? What makes it unique and special? I think is where, where they're going with this. But again, it's, it's something that the select board and the historical commission need to determine. Is it needed or necessary, pertinent? Because all these action steps, for the purpose of these action steps, I think I put in email is to make sure that the goals and objectives actually occur. That, that, that groups are taking responsibility to see this through in a timely way.
We're advocating for state-sponsored anything.
I mean, it's more work, is what I'm saying. It's another layer that might be worthy or may not. And that's what the discussion is about.
Well, it seems to me that that one in particular, I mean, I was recently at this demolition delay ride-off meeting we had a few nights ago. And this is right up that area, you know, and I, personally, I don't think that should be in the select board table. I think that should be squarely under the historical commission. I mean, they got the historical district down Main Street here, and, you know, a lot of research is gone into those buildings. So this just seems so appropriate that it should be not at this table, in my opinion. I don't know how it ended up in the first place, but it'd be my suggestion that that go elsewhere.
Move to 5A.
Goal number five, we're talking about zoning policies and planning procedures that allows for sensible growth. Develop criteria for prioritizing parcels for acquisition, especially in chapter 61A. If one becomes available. So if you know about chapter 61, if somebody wants to withdraw, there's a right of first refusal that the town has. Most of the time it doesn't occur. I think it's rare that parcels are pulled out, but when they are, we just tell someone to always have the resources anyways to purchase the land. But this, I think, is asking, should it be explored? Should something come up, would there be a strategy in place where the town can pursue this endeavor? And so this seems sensible, this would work in conjunction with the planning, the planning board. However, there were no action steps listed in the 2008 version, as I've indicated here, so.
Not that I'm thinking that there's a magic pot of gold, but does anybody know, has the plan board ever requested that a fund be put up to have available to, to purchase? I mean, you think about it, if there's, let's say there's $10 million worth of land in 61A or 61B, a certain percentage of that may come up for sale every five years if you pull it out and the town has no resources to even put down any kind of down payment on it. I'm not saying that it can be done, but I just, I just.
When it comes out in chapter 61, is it automatic by law that, that the town has, you know, right of first refusal?
It is, correct.
By law.
So then you need to be prepared.
Well, right, because that's why.
But I think it depends.
I can't remember what parcel was sold that came out of 61A years ago and, you know. Yeah, we love to own it, but we just don't have.
Well, it begs the question of, does, does the town see the need for it? I mean, does the town feel that it needs more public space, for example? Does it feel it needs more park space or recreational space for certain activities? If yes, then maybe there might be a reason to pursue this action step as a strategy to possibly.
I think it ties back in with goal number one, doesn't it?
Yeah. Right? We, remember, this is all about open space and recreation, and you're trying to protect and enhance those resources.
I think it should come before the board for its review, whether or not it can afford it. It's a whole other issue, but I mean, if we have a right of first refusal, it's our, our job to accept it or refuse it.
Right, right. If I remember right on that 61A, and Alan, you maybe know better than I, or there's an assessor here. You have a limited number of days to take that up.
I don't know for sure, but I'm, I'm thinking it's gotta be a limit.
I think it's 60 days to come up with that kind of, and.
To exercise a right.
There's a limited, there's a limited number of days.
Only a certain window of opportunity.
So if there's no money to at least put something on the barrel then, you know, to, to get a deal going if something came up, it'd be pretty hard to do.
It would, but just to put it on the agenda, say that this parcel's coming out of 61A and there'll be a public meeting to discuss it, makes perfect sense to me rather than to ignore it. So I mean, making an act doesn't mean that, well, it can't be the world, and you know, it makes the money. It just means we discuss it at the table. I think it's a good way to do it.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna be saying that there's money, you know, that's.
No, I can spend it.
But I am saying that maybe there should be a certain amount of money that's available so if the town voted that they wanted to take somebody up on the right of first refusal, that at least it wouldn't be, you know, we spent it all on raiders and police cruisers and that sort of thing, you know. But there's, it's just something to think about going forward.
Because it's usually like a little deposit you have to put down to hold that. It might be more in 60 days, and that's how you get that agreement.
Right. Put a little money to the buy seller there. Just a side thought, but it's generating these kinds of.
And this is what it's got. This is what it's supposed to be doing, is generating this discussion. So the next one is a typo, which actually should be five B, not four B. Identify the cost of community services that must be provided by the town for new development. I really don't know what to make of this one. Haven't had taken any time to absorb it. But one action step would be to examine using a consultant or planning students to prepare a study. Two research methods and work with the town departments and school district to assemble data. I mean, not really clear where this came from, what the intent was behind it. But nonetheless, there it is with Select Forest Designation next to it in the two thousand eight version. I don't really have a follow-up or the other ones.
I mean, I can see if somebody was going to put up a fifteen duplex situation. I'm trying to think of someplace remote. But, you know, what it would cost to put in the roads and a certain percentage of those people, how many kids they would have and, you know. I suppose the next part of this thing is to figure out if they were going to school them in town or out of town or whatever.
What happens to the community services in terms of sewer and water? If the parcel to be developed, shall we say, is going to need these services? Is something new that's along this track? Would that be something that the town has to look at? Or is that going to be a cost for who's ever developed it? To supply those services? Because it's available, they've got to tie into it. It's nothing the town has to worry about unless it's going to make demands on the system.
So I mean, we'll put the sewer in, we all have to pay our own connection rate. I suppose there's a certain, it would be a certain cost to extend the pipe. And that's why I understand where you're coming from.
But it's not a town cost. Whoever wants to connect to it is their cost.
Right, I think this, what comes to me is roads and schools and.
Right.
There's going to be, you have to think about the limitations. How many connections can you make to the existing sewer? Existing, what impacts if you connect X number of new developments to water?
Depends on how cheap we get to buy the electricity that it takes to run a sewer plant. That's a discussion further down.
So this is in there. It's something that's probably worth discussing. But again.
Ron, either none of that or.
I don't, I mean, it makes general sense. You know, I mean, is your fire district big enough to allow for new inhabitants in the town? Are you bursting out at the seams on your community services? But I can't imagine we'd get a handle on a lot of these things. You know, I really, you know, we kind of meet the needs of the citizens of the residents of the town, right? It's more of a reactive than an approach to approach. I'm not so sure I have a problem with that approach either, you know. So I don't, I'm trying to think what was in the minds of the people who put this one in there. I don't, I mean, right now we have a school system of a huge vacancy. And things like that, there should have been more effort at that time back then to understand what we were going to face today. So I don't know about that one.
Yeah, you know, I guess it goes back to earlier when Lenny came in, Lenny Roberts came in and talked about power plants and all this stuff, or not. Right, right. I was a little bit in jest, but I said, you know, are we going to put a special firehouse up there? And have another chief and another, you know, how many services are going to be required by all this expansion? Even, and some of it may not even be expansion of residences as much as expansions of, you know, commerce.
Yeah, right. Every time I go by the Gargier Industrial Park there up on the side of the hill, where they cut every tree down and such, I wonder, you know, to what extent I want to be planning for an industrial park, you know, in this town. And I don't, I question this five. I don't, I mean, theoretically it makes sense, but I'm trying to find a passion.
Cut down all the trees and then put up a cell tower, that's what it tries to look like though.
Some of this makes me think that probably just wondering, maybe to sort of think out of the box of where you are now, where will it be almost in fifty years? And have you put anything in place? As opposed to, I mean, ten years is bound to be short to anticipate those kind of changes here in town.
Things change pretty fast when the economy improves.
Well, that's the thing, that we have to keep in mind. You know, something, like I said, it's taking two hundred and fifty, three hundred years for this area to develop the character it has, but that can change pretty quickly. You have some new growth and new development coming. And I think this is just trying to think outside the box of all I've said and just be prepared. And that's what, that's what these documents are about, is about planning for what might come.
All right, we're almost to the end.
Right, and five F, which the planning board in one of its meetings deliberated and decided, this was originally under the second goal. We felt it made more sense sitting in the fifth goal. But that is to provide for government and mining operations. And the one action step was explore shifting licensing authority for gravel pits from the Select Board to other boards as appropriate. This is something that the planning board had discussed approaching the Select Board, asking whether or not this made sense for the Select Board to shift this authority over to, say, the planning board or other boards to manage. I put in my note here, this refers to page eleven of the bylaw for the town of Ashville, that's entitled stripping land or so I don't know. My short time here, there's one situation that I know of related to mining that's kind of gone back and forth and been in and out of various discussions.
You're talking about Hollow Road.
No, I was talking about sixteen.
Yeah, one sixteen. So I'm not really sure if this is something that needs to happen or not, but I think it is worth discussion.
Well, it would require a bylaw change.
It would require certain changes.
I mean, the action step doesn't seem like it's too certain if it would happen or not, but.
Yeah, I mean, there's that big word in the fund that says explore, explore, shift. So it's basically we're putting out there and discussing this.
The only one I was ever involved with was when they harvested the gravel at the top of the home hill. Poissons owned Jonathan Sears. He went from my household break, I call it, Jonathan Sears was fine. And there was a huge mound there. And when Gina Williams Poissons purchased that, they wanted to make that field level to this now. I think that was eighty eight, because it was right after the flood of eighty seven, and the town had lots of uses for gravel. And so they applied. And it was, it was kind of a hot topic.
Right.
And we made the decision to let him go. It was a hot topic, but it came out within the last.
I mean, there's some municipalities that have requirements. They're going to mine, you're done with your mining operation. The area needs to be restored to a more natural state. Now, whether or not that's something that this town should be pursuing, I don't know. Is it worth discussing? Probably. So it's there. It's up to you to determine. And then I would just have you see here that there's a starting and ending date. I put in the dates where they were in the two thousand eight version. The ending dates, if the action step makes sense, perhaps there's an end date in mind. A lot of times it's just ongoing, maybe something that just moves over time. And then you need to determine whether or not it's a high or medium or low priority. And then for this final version of the open space wreck plan, the state is requiring that you list potential funding sources. And it could be grants, it could be specific grants, possible just general grants. It could be local tax revenue, it could be in-kind, it could be volunteer.
Very good.
So that needs to be listed. So it's my hope that the Select Board can, maybe perhaps if you're not meeting next week, you're meeting in two weeks, maybe you can have enough, your discussion farther enough along, you might be able to take some action on this. So that we can get your version incorporated into the document as early as we can. I would love to have gotten this to you sooner, but.
Like gets in the way.
I've got other responsibilities and I'm doing the best I can with this. And I appreciate whatever you can do with it.
Casey.
How are the others doing today, boards?
Everybody's been great. I mean, people are stepping up. And you can have some reminders and send them out there. But everybody's been just great professional and providing what needs to be provided. So we're just about there. And then it just has to all be assembled and conservative and fine about.
Paul, it should dawn on you.
Exactly.
There's no reason to change any of the start dates. I mean, those were started before. You start a new start date if we're just going to continue.
Yeah, unless you, you can leave the start dates unless you were going to revise it in a way you feel like it merits starting this year.
Yep.
And you need to take a look at the priority column too, to just determine whether or not. You could have, you can say it's a low priority, you're not going to.
Just as long as the column's full.
I want to see, I don't want any question marks in the column. Let it fill them up.
Ron, do you think that we could mark this up between now and the seventeenth? And then we could have a quick discussion on it and turn it back down, send it back down? And I don't see anything.
Right.
I won't be here on the seventeenth, but I'd be glad to send it one way. You know, my liberation and this is my thoughts and.
Use it that night.
If you, to what extent you guys want, I'd be behind you.
Yeah, we don't, our plan is not to hold up volunteers to trying to get this worked out.
That's great. That should be one of your actions.
That's a good second.
On the rest of that, the committee sat down and it's about the same thing, about four pages of that. That sort of, I actually should do this, or you should do that. I'll get that through you also. The committee did that one for the same, about that is, but there's about five or six pages of that that's in this one, but that's the overall whole time.
And are both of these done, they do at the same time?
Yeah, this whole, I don't know about that, this whole plan, that goes with the split.
Right, that has to go in with the, for our meeting with Mary Prowse.
I'm confused on that Doug. This, I've seen this open space plan. It's a notebook, you know, that's in draft form. But I didn't see this, this is a separate notebook in the back room, right?
It is, it's on the computer. I dug it off the computer.
So this has a separate, this is its own standing document?
Yeah, it's a hundred and twenty-seven pages of it.
So we need to look at this separately?
But they all go in together. One of the things that was a problem with our last one, which we got by with, was that the required open space plan that was part of it was not fully finished.
No, extract.
But it's a required piece of the open.
They finished this one.
They what?
They finished this one in two thousand eight. They had finished the open space plan, but they only had conditional approval in two thousand eight.
So it's finished, it's being reviewed, is that the idea? Two thousand and twelve was a renewal day?
Yes, it's just a renewal, bring the hell up today that there's something different. For this whole plan, there wasn't hardly anything different in it to us.
But this time they are requiring this be.
But they are requiring the open space into this plan and send it together.
As part of it?
As part of it.
Really?
Yes.
So do we need our input on this also?
I'll get that report. I didn't want to, I didn't have time to print out a hundred and twenty-seven pages for you all.
Oh, we have to review a hundred and twenty-seven pages right now?
I don't know, there's about the last six that are similar to what Alan just had here.
Oh, yeah, I didn't want to.
That spells out just about what you're saying, you're going to fire. If there's something to do with the fire department, the fire chief has to do it. If there's something to do with the town hall, they have the fire chief, the police chief, all the people.
So why don't you print out the six pages that.
Yeah, that's what I just thought I would do.
Or even email it to us, scan them in and.
And just put that on the agenda for the seventeenth as well? Might as well look at it all together, it's all going to the same time, so.
Sure.
Anything we can do to expedite it, I think it's got to be taken care of.
But the sooner we send that out, then Ron could send his response back to those pages.
Yeah, forget it the day before the seventeenth, it's not going to.
I'll get the six pages to your people in the next couple of days.
And Alan, I mean, I'm going to be on the phone to you. You know, I won't be able to go through open meeting situations like this because, well, I'll be working independently of the board, giving you my thoughts on this and trying to request information. Because some of this stuff, I don't even understand why it's here, you know, maybe. So I'll be in touch with you and, like, it seems like this, like the gravel they were talking about here. I mean, don't we have site plan review in this town? Shouldn't there be like contours before and after excavation and all that? Isn't there a permitting process?
Well, there's a permitting process, but there's what that entails exactly, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But there is a permitting process that needs to take place for mining operators.
The stolen pier on one sixteen, I think, I think I've seen a site plan that shows before and existing and proposed.
I've never seen any, but.
Okay, I could be wrong.
But like Doug's point, the key piece of this is why we formed the committee, the I D O committee, was that a five-year action plan involves so many different boards and commissions of the town. The body of this document, open space document, there'll be some changes. And that's related to two thousand ten census data. And then the maps, there's a series of maps that are attached as an appendix to this document that are being revised now by Dodson Flinker. And there's no cost rating out to the town, and I don't expect there will be a cost. Other than it might be a little bit of a printing cost, I'm not sure. But they're doing this their own time. I'm trying to do this on time, everybody's putting this into their agenda. So bits and pieces are coming together. The one, I'm going to be talking to Peter Flinker tomorrow at Dodson Flinker. He's working on the body. The one concern I do have has to do with the ADA. There's an ADA report that needs to be included in this. It requires a little bit of self-evaluation. So there's, I don't, I don't think it's difficult, it's just tedious. It's a process that needs to happen.
Self-evaluation.
Self-evaluation that the state requires to have in this document.
Laying on the couch by yourself.
Pretty straightforward stuff, but it takes time.
I have the same question for both of you in case you know the answer. We get this all done, we turn it in. How soon does it come back again to be revised? Five years?
I think it's five years. About, yeah, five years. It's good if they land in this good for two thousand and eight.
Whose pen does this go to the state under?
Yours.
I mean, so.
Well, for the, like I said, for the two thousand eight version, three entities signed off on it. Certainly the Select Board needs to sign off on it.
The reason I'm asking is I might not be here when this thing goes out the door.
I have a feeling you'll be back.
You'll be back.
Unless you're going for it in two months.
I look forward to that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, don't, don't send us the whole bylaw of all the needed justice.
No, I just, I'll just send the, a lot of the, is I'll get the whole thing, the copy to there. So you can see the whole, the whole thing. I'll send the, just the, we can see the five or six pages. Beautiful.
Are you doing it in Word? What's it in, what's the form? Are you doing it in Word? What's it in? What's the form?
It's in Word.
So if you cannot do PDFs, Mary, so that I can insert comments into the actual Word, that would make it a lot easier for me. So just give me the five pages of Word that apply to it.
Yeah, okay.
I'd be glad to help you if you.
I sent this PDF to you, so.
Yeah.
You actually sent the Word, huh?
Well, no, in your case, it's a form that would be, you know, I probably, plus it's simple enough to address five years.
You have to read it, Ron, when you can type it into the Word, it just five, six pages and make some notes in it.
Edits.
Okay.
So I appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
Considering you're making it.
I know you're a busy guy.
Do it again, so. I have anything else?
Oh, let's do the samples. You're going to do the samples? All right, Martin, thank you. You're all set, Doug?
Yep.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody from the IT committee here.
No, it says cancel.
Cancel.
Cancel is cancelled.
I didn't get over. But I do see the sewer permission. So if we could go down to old business review town council's markup of net metering post community energy purchase contract. Do we get that, Mary?
You each have, you each have a final copy. I also have a slightly earlier in the day red and blue copy, which I can use to do through where there are changes. I didn't give you both because the earlier copy is not exactly the same as the later copy we've talked before. Doug, not having a confusing number of correct or not quite correct copies there. So you have the final copy of town council says would be ready. Keep in mind, and I believe I supplied to Flinker. Email as well.
I don't see the email.
Actually, I think, um. Let me see, maybe.
I don't see the email.
Yep, yeah, hold on a second.
Well, let's go, let's go through the contract here.
Yeah.
Todd, you want to come up closer here?
So there's a bit of a cover where she brings a couple things to your attention before you get to.
So what it comes down to is that we met last week. Mary, you directed Donna to get ahold of Nexamp.
Talked to Nexamp, talked to town council, told town council to contact Nexamp directly, which she did immediately. And they have been working on it since.
With fever, I believe, from what we understand.
Yes.
Yes, and I'd like to publicly thank Mary from, I think her input really helped move this along, I commend her.
They have been working on it days.
Right, and you've been right there making sure the docs kept being connected, my pleasure.
I mean, the way I understand it on Friday, I think Nexamp wants to keep pushing through to work Friday night together.
Yes, I think, I think they are concerned because there are caps within the state. The caps apply to the regions and regions closed, so. Our window of opportunity keeps getting narrower, so it's been good.
So why don't you lead us down through?
Let me get you started and then maybe then you can go to the other places you get discussing, I'll go check that email. So the first thing I have is what you see there, June 28th, it's just the date.
Yeah.
The next thing that is in red or blue is under recitals. Second paragraph desires to, it did say desires to purchase and receive, town council has changed it to, to receive from seller. Her concern was that the way it originally read was that the town would be required to purchase all the energy credits from the facility. Toward the end of that same sentence, generated by the facility and purchase a portion is her new wording to the contract. Again, to clarify, before it simply said purchased and that we do products associated with facility. So in this area, what she's doing is making it clear that it's purchasing a portion. The original language made it. Need as it would be that the town was responsible for all. Now therefore, in consideration, recitals the mutual promises. Representations and warranties. So we are, sorry, third paragraph under recitals. The word promises is added to representations, warranties, commitments, and conditions. Nothing else on that page. Bottom of the next page, host customer, very bottom, underneath, April 25th was changed to June 27th. Next page, page three, 4.2A. Buyer shall in a timely manner with seller's assistance.
The buyer shall in a timely manner with seller's assistance.
With seller's assistance is. Ah, sorry, that's in blue, so. Yes, with seller's assistance is my.
In other words, they're going to, they're going to help us.
Yep. Take all actions necessary be, again, with seller's assistance inserted in that first line. C at the bottom, seller will assist host, that seems to be. Bottom of the page, date changed. Next page.
So that has to do with the reporting obligations that we go hand in. So they would actually prepare that very much the same as.
That's right, she felt that it would be costly.
The town resource management does our D E P, so.
Right. So first paragraph, top of the page, the paragraph in progress. Second line, where it says buyer raised to accept from seller. And then town council has taken out and to compensate seller as set forth herein, so you don't see that language.
I do see it.
Me too. All right, so why is it that we're lying through here? That is, that is one of the little bits is the reason this one that you have in front of you is a little different from the one I have in front of you is because there were some edits.
Commencing on the commercial operations date and continuing throughout the term, seller agrees to sell to buyer. And buyer agrees to accept from seller the energy generated by the facility and to compensate seller as set forth herein.
Yes, so I'm sorry, so she's moved it around, she's taken it from one place, put it in another. What you see is the final version.
Okay.
What I see is that that was earlier in that paragraph that to compensate seller is for here, it's been moved to another part of the sentence for clarity.
Set forth with the energy generated by a 60 kilowatt or 2.4% of the facility's nameplate capacity is determined by the meter, the quantity.
Right, so she did some, let's say, tweaking or focusing that 60 kilowatt hour AC or 2.4%. Actually, looks like struck out, it was 2.5 kilowatt AC, that's gone, what you see is what?
2.4.
You have 2.4, there's a 2.5. 5.4 saying page B, so halfway down the page B, buyer may not change without written approval, written approval or as provided herein. In reference to what is provided here. E at the bottom of the page.
Yep.
That's changed to read the way it does now. Seller shall be responsible with assistance of buyer. Seller shall be responsible of F for sale of all electricity not used by buyer, I believe that's a more insertion.
That's a totally new.
And page five. G for avoidance of doubt, again, looks like.
So that, going back, that's a great change because we're agreeing to 2.4, but if for some reason we didn't get to 2.4, we wouldn't be responsible for 2.4.
Right. Is this a contract that you've already agreed to? Yes. The piece changed now? Oh, okay. Yes, I talked to them this afternoon too. In the email, and I thought I had it here. If I had it in a tree more closely, I might have it here, but town council referred to one thing that she wanted to get in, they did not agree to. That's what's called to your attention, that's not in here. I will get that before you're done.
Okay, well, let's, let's not break our progress.
Yep, G, so again, restatement for clarity.
For avoidance of doubt, buyer shall have no obligation to pay for any portion of electricity generated or net metering credits produced in excess of those set forth in section 3.
So as you can see, town council felt that the original document did not at all make it clear that we might not be responsible for the output of the facility or aspects of the output of the facility. And then before, what you see is it goes now to 5.5. There is two small paragraphs removed. But again, what you're being recommended before it goes directly to 5.5.
Takes it all off of us, is what it does.
It does, and the paragraphs that are removed in the same thing.
Both parties showing the reasonable efforts to administer this agreement to minimize the government charges in the event of any of the sales of energy in that being prepared. And that second paragraph is.
Where you vote on.
The B.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it's a little bit like trying to herd cats, right? Because you're talking about, you don't know what charges the government may have in the future. So. We'll get a real good handle on that. But we're going to try to.
All right, so page six, nothing but the date at the bottom, and I won't.
Nothing else on page five, under.
Nothing else on page five after we get to 5.5. And you get to 5.5, and it's other things have been removed. And if, just to save us time, where I go for in saying nothing, it is with the exception of the date change at the bottom that is on each one. So. Didn't, didn't all pages, every page got the same day change? Yes, yeah, so I will keep reading, as I think, I don't think it's been changed. So other than that, page six, no comments, no change. Page seven. I do not see any track changes. Page eight, no track changes, other than the bottom. Page.
Now, let's go back to net. One of many that have ever put on this, and I am certain, somebody must be. Is it saying in 7.3A that we can designate what meters we want? For going notwithstanding if such 10 megawatt limit is increased by every, whatever, I don't think. And by the sign, he will be able to that meeting for association. Somewhere in here, it has to, it has to say something about us designating what meters that we want in this.
And, and I'm sorry, but did you say 7.3?
Yeah, where it says net metering.
Yeah.
Page seven, and I, it probably is not this section.
Oh, I see, on mine it's, on the other one I'm looking at, it says 7.1, so. This will change on page seven, 7.3A. That's the one you're talking about. And.
Because this is one of the discussions we had, we, you know, we have to designate the number of of meters that we want.
The way of that, it doesn't address that question.
Okay.
But it made me question, does this 7.3A preclude the town from later developing a solar power? Because it's saying that the buyer shall not own or operate, nor is it, nor will it be the assignee of the output of net metering facilities with a capacity of more than 10 megawatts, including this facility's output.
Unless permitted by applicable law.
Right. But this isn't a 10 megawatt, right? This is 2.5? Is that correct? 2.4, 2.5? That's what capacity is, huh? It says that capacity is, well, it says 60 kilowatt is 2.4%, right? Or 2.4%. I think that, you know, that was a question I had as well, sorry to backtrack, but every seller or the set for preventing net metering credits associated with the energy generated by 60 kilowatt or 2.4% of nameplate capacity. And I think I recall the nameplate capacity of development being 2.5 megawatt.
Right, and that is crossed out in the track changes copy.
Not percent, I'm not talking about 2.4 or 2.5%.
2.5 megawatt is what you said.
Yeah.
And.
The nameplate capacity of the facility is not, this is in here, but I believe it's 2.5 megawatt. So how many?
Right, and, and I have that struck through on page four. Operations, let me just catch up to one of these here, 16 kilowatts AC or 2.4%. Following that on this copy is a 2.5 megawatt parentheses AC.
Okay.
And that's struck out.
Why is that struck out?
That I don't know.
Okay. Because what they're saying, there's.
So it's 2.5 megawatt.
2.4% of that is what we're buying. Is what I.
Well, but do we know what we're buying yet? Because has the decision even been made as to whether or not it's the whole town use or?
Well, it's in here.
The. Just so I can get on the same page, help me out. A megawatt is 1,000 kilowatt?
So this, to me, is saying how much of the production we are getting. It doesn't say what percentage of our use, our annual use, we're buying. It's just saying how much they're willing to give us. My question was, do we get ours first? What if you have a production month where they're not passing? Are we left out of the call? Or are the documents at work?
Fed's on.
But I was gonna be quiet until we finish.
Don't assume the question, if we remember it, or maybe it'll show up somewhere else.
Yeah, I only made it halfway through.
Okay.
I think that needs to be done.
Yeah, 7.3A.
Because so far, what I'm reading is that we have responsibility to purchase that.
Yeah.
They have a responsibility to sell it to us at a discount, but if it doesn't exist.
Right, if only a certain amount of that exists that much, who gets it? Is my question.
Or a tornado walks through and pulls it all out of the ground.
Well, then, yeah, then I guess we're looking at the termination or the. Yeah, whatever.
The retention?
Yeah. Dissolve the agreement or whatever the provision is for that, but.
Okay, finally we're on, we'll make a list of notes to go back when we get, but I think that was good.
So I believe you're on page seven, your copy says 7.3 net metering. This one says 7.1 net metering, but it will say buyer acknowledges that.
Yeah.
And I don't see any change of language there. Let me just look at 7.24 contracts. It's the same. Okay, so in this one, it was just a misnumbering of this. Page eight. No tract changes. Page nine, under.
Halfway down. Not to throw you off track, but I will. I think if we go back to page seven, that last paragraph, I think that addresses what we were talking about as far as if the system went down. If the defaulting party proceeds with due diligence during such 30-day period to cure such breach of warranty by reason of the nature of the work involved using commercially used electric, we cure the same. Within said 30 days, the defaulting party's time to do so shall extend by the time reasonably necessary to cure the same.
Yeah, I don't feel very comfortable with that, especially with the last sentence that says the defaulting party's time to do shall be extended by the time reasonably necessary to cure the same. So he had a tornado or an active dog coming through and wiping it out, and more of these kinds of events delays in setup again. And I mean, that's how I reasonably assumed. That would be our trigger to say goodbye, you know, something like that.
Well, I would think if we're sticking our neck out for 20 years, that if they go down, they're still gonna need to supply us. They can purchase power stations and supply us with credits.
Right, that's how I would like to see this, insurance or that. But I don't see it in here.
Right, well, we all see it there.
Okay, well, I kind of looked through it earlier and I didn't see it anywhere. But maybe I missed it.
So you're talking about B under 8.1?
Yes.
And do you want a note made there?
See, under that, what we've just discussed, it says termination of call. I'm kind of jumping ahead, but it says, if this under B, it says if this agreement is terminated due to an event of default, which is above this, seller shall have no further obligation to deliver, and buyer shall have no further obligation to purchase net metering credits generated subsequent to such termination date. So we're kind of left out of the cold on that, the way I interpret it. But maybe it's a plug in the report.
I'm sorry, Ron, can you just confirm again where you are reading the remedy?
8.3B, 8.3 or 8.1? I'm sorry, I was just looking forward for remedy there and came to 8.3.3B because of what you said, Tom, that they still have the obligation to send us the recs. But it says here that they don't have, that they should, shall, they have no obligation to provide, to deliver the recs.
Is that 8.3A?
No, B. If disagreement is terminated due to an event of default, seller shall have no further obligation to deliver, and buyer shall have no further obligation to purchase net metering credits generated subsequent to such termination date. So I mean, it seems like everyone's off the hook, which we might define too. I'd like to have them here telling us what they mean by that.
Well, if it were me alone, I would try to get in there that if something happened when they went down, they would be responsible for a year. That we, I mean, to say that they're gonna be responsible for a whole 20 years would be unreasonable, you know? But to say that they would be responsible to supply us with our credits for a year from the date that they went down. And then if they couldn't get rebuilt or there wasn't a sign that they were gonna get started again within, at the end of that year, then we could both terminate the agreement. Does that sound reasonable?
From our perspective? But from their perspective, I think they would want to remove it.
Because they want an agreement. And it seems to me the discount that they want to give us, now that I have a better understanding of it, is they want to give us a discount on this very minuscule slice of what they're gonna generate.
Exactly.
Which is a lot to us.
Yeah.
Tiny.
Tiny to that, that's why we're.
I mean, if they gave us a 50% discount on 2.4, that's only 1.2, right? My math, that basic math. 1.2% discount.
What, another thing that's interesting is that event of default, which is capitalized, is not in glossary terms. And it's supposed to be according to the beginning of the contract. It says that when used in this agreement, capitalized terms shall have meanings given in glossary terms. Event of default is not in glossary, although it's capitalized. So to be interested, no, is an event of default. Active dog.
Who, look at 8.1?
And then it's a default?
So the phone shop comes.
Okay.
So we find.
Does that hurt?
Yeah. Yep.
How would that, 8.1 be the last sentence? By the time reasonably necessary to cure the same. To me, almost feels like if both parties agree, which I think is what Ron was trying to get at, because they could say, well, it's gonna take us a year, we'll be back. Maybe it's two years, and we say, oh, two years is tomorrow, so we want to end this. Because somebody's setting the reasonable time, doesn't it matter?
Well, they're supplying us with the discounted electricity during that time if they're generating, and if they're not, I don't care.
But do we care if they're pushed out of the door and not getting discounted?
Right, and so, right, so. You know, and then if you use the same language when you said a year, you know, that, I mean, that's how I read that. That's the only thing that I'm imagining, that certain imagination can run free, but the only thing I'm imagining is that for some reason the plant goes down.
Yeah.
So if they have a year, and then at the end of the year, we can decide to drop them, or they could drop us. But if they said, hey, in 60 days, we're so close to being back up, let's just continue this, so we don't have to look for somebody else. Right? I mean, that.
And if it's more than a reasonable
Does that?
amount of time, or does that mean, is that, do we get to choose whether or not the block is suspended on the contract? Not the way this is written. Now, if we're going without service for two years while we're preparing the facility, there's two years that we are out. To your point, whether they get it from somewhere else and give us credits.
So in other words, we could sign this because it says the agreement goes into, goes into respect if they resign it, right? But if they're not generating any credits, they're not gonna give us any until they start.
Right.
So you could actually be signing a 20-year contract that doesn't start until five years down the line.
Theoretically, yeah.
Theoretically.
Or if service is interrupted for multiple periods of time in between, you're not getting that cheap electricity credit.
I would think once they start generating, they have the responsibility to continue generating. That's what I would like in that.
If they took out the financing, they're gonna want to generate too. But, you know, things happen. And.
At some point, we're gonna have to sit down in the executive session and do a little, the last negotiating.
I think, I think the bottom line, if something catastrophic happens, we're gonna end up pulled out of this whole, both entities, us and the system, all the same. Most likely, we'd result from something like that. What I'm wondering about is maintenance problems, and blow up some part of a critical structure in the facility, and it takes two months to get the parts from China.
At that facility?
At that facility, yeah, that facility. What happens, you know? We're just not getting enough.
That's what I say, that once they start generating, that we're depending on them, and that if they blow down, we should.
Only for the discount.
Right, but we should, we should be.
Yeah, we're putting our neck out there.
Well, is it possible that we would be dependent on them with the discount? They would be providing it, we buy, otherwise it'd still end up with the credits which we then have to resell to someone else?
Well, if they're not generating electricity, they're not generating credits.
Which may be responsible for ours regarding.
Do you give us credits if they're not generating?
Yes.
They can buy credits, right? They can buy and sell credits, you can buy from someone else and discount them.
And be honest?
Well, I think to fall this one in, there's nothing good for them other than giving us the signed contract.
Get it done. I don't see any reason they're not asking for. I mean, you didn't see it as not.
Yeah, but they push back, so we can get something to negotiate and give one up and get something else.
What's the next change exactly?
I'm not sure where you are.
Oh, we're still at 8.1, 8.2?
All right, 8.2 force measure.
And, because handsome, I don't know.
So there is nothing in 8.2.
Okay.
There is nothing in 8.3.
Now, isn't that, we were discussing, Mary, you had stepped on the road to get the letter, so.
Well, right, you were discussing B when I went out. Did you make changes there or?
I mostly got one about the event of a default.
Okay. So ready to look at 9.1?
9.1.
And there, one, two, three sentences down, start with buyer, at then current market values is an insertion. And the line below that, from buyer, any loss in revenues, if any. An insertion. Nothing in 9.2, nothing in 9.3. Sorry, these are on different pages because of the small changes, so. Nothing in 9.3A or B. Article 10, assignment, 10.1, prior written consent, I see no changes. 10.2, collateral assignment, I'd say, nothing A, nothing AI. AI. No. AI, AI, A, step in rights, no changes.
I'm sorry, Mary, can we back up, distract the 9.1? It's saying that upon event of default, by the buyer, us, the seller can sell the energy and net meter credits through this facility to some other buyer and recover from buyer, us, any loss in revenue resulting from the sale. So if there's some event of default, whatever it is, and we default, they can sell the credits to some other entity and charge us for any lost revenue. Any difference?
So they can sell them at a discount to get rid of them, and then we would make a.
We'd be on the hook for the difference.
There's nothing saying they're trying to sell it as high as possible to protect us. Not that they would, but we didn't know.
Well, it does say at then current market values.
And that is the insertion there.
Okay, so if they sold it at current market values, would there be any loss of revenue? No. Is that correct?
I think that's the.
Is that the idea of inserting that language?
Inserting. And then also inserted is, recover from buyer any loss of revenues, if any, to underscore, no other charges, nothing above beyond, or different from the sale at current.
Go ahead.
Article 10, assignment.
You can't assign it. We buy it, we own it, we sign it, we can't ship it off to Conway or.
So no changes 10.1, no changes 10.2. AI, no changes. AI, no changes. AI, A, no changes. B, no changes. C, no changes. D, no changes. Cibley, right to cure, A. No changes. B, continuation of agreement, no changes.
Under A, right to cure, A. Says buyer will not exercise any right to terminate or suspend this agreement unless it shall have given lender. That's the first time I've talked about lender. Who are we talking about with the lender we're talking about?
That's it, yeah. Fundamentally rejection, cure of bankruptcy rejection, exercising remedies, see lender appearing in this section. I thought that.
The United States.
Rights of lenders seems to appear. Rights of lenders seems to appear, I, no, working back here. I think it appears in ten for the first time.
And the buyer's however respective buyer, such surviving entity is acceptable to lender at sole discretion. Ten point one, talked about the lender.
And in I, I, A, it says lender as facility owner or as collateral society.
The bossery, lender means the entity or persons providing financing to the seller in conjunction with the facility or in connection with financing related to seller, including any facility.
So seller and then he's seller's backers.
Yeah, where we were getting them from, to go with what you have to go with.
Like so often, it's a triangle.
Where would you like to pick up?
Do you know?
The cure of bankruptcy rejection on page eleven. No changes. Provide right to cure, A, cure period, no changes. This is, you know, as was presented to us by seller. B, continuation of agreement, no changes. Small D, lender, third-party beneficiary, no changes. C, no changes. Ten point three, no changes.
So it's all talking about the financing.
Correct. Article eleven, dispute resolution. First change I see is arbitration, which is small C under another point one. Negotiation, mediation, and then C, arbitration. And the parties may mutually agree to arbitrate any dispute hereunder. If the parties so agree, then the following provisions will apply. That seems to be. And then the next insertion I see is now on page fourteen. It's on page fifteen, down to article twelve miscellaneous. Under twelve point one notices if to the seller, it says, attention, John Murphy, if it's across C act four with a different email. And if to buyer, town council just inserted that, but was not there. Beyond town bashment. Seems not the material. Sixteen, twelve point two, it looks like the one, two, three, after confidential information, which has been designated as such in writing to either party, is an insertion.
Sorry, Mary?
Yeah, I'm looking forward on this.
Page fifteen.
Yeah.
Twelve point two.
Sixteen?
Page.
Oh, it's fifty, twelve point two, and there's a.
Right confidentiality, which is at the end of the second line. Says otherwise, it's all confidential information which has been designated as such in writing by either party.
It's that last phrase.
To any person at any time during or after the term of this agreement.
What's this?
That's kind of bad. Yeah, but the contract's going to be public.
So anybody can get it, we just say. Right? So that means?
Yeah, I think the original language. I did see one back and forth in which Donna was representing that all of these are complete documents. There is nothing we can read to that will keep those from being public documents, but. You're on page sixteen.
When you get that ninety-five percent discount of the towns in law.
That's right.
You're on page sixteen, twelve point four, governing law. Venue and jurisdiction is a change. The last sentence, starting venue and jurisdiction of any action, is a change, entire sentence. Twelve point five, entire understanding. Said entire agreement before, changed to entire understanding. This agreement together with the attachments here too. If any, represents the entire understanding of the parties. Either party relying upon its representation not contained herein. Removed was this agreement together with its residual contains the entire agreement between seller and buyer with respect to the subject matter here of, and supersedes all other understandings or agreements both within oral between the parties relating to the subject matter hereof. Looks like it's more of the clear language. It seems to be that's a clear language change. You're on page seventeen, twelve point eight amendments.
I am, actually, it's on page sixteen of mine. I was looking at twelve point seven, how clear it was that this is not a joint venture. There's no joint venture, but this is, this is an agreement. But it's not that we have to say in the management or operation or expense control or anything like that.
Right, and you're right, let's see, twelve point eight is on your page sixteen, sorry, five point seven. So twelve point eight, again, binding effect crossed out, success and assigns is what you see. No modifications, way more change down to all parties here too. Successors and assigns of each of the parties here too, which is where your copy ends. There is what looks to me like the same thing, a more complicated sentence taken out. But the change looks mostly like clear language change, but that's where something is removed, what you see as well is inserted. Says this. Top way. It said before, was this agreement may not be amended, changed, modified, or altered unless such amendment changed. Modification or alteration is in writing and signed by both the parties to this agreement or their successor in interest. So maybe that's, no. This agreement inures to the benefit of and is binding upon the parties and their respective successors and permitted facilities, assigns. Next.
Page seventeen?
Next change, you're on page seventeen, twelve point twelve. Just the twelve point twelve itself, remember. Everything else, the third part, party beneficiaries, looks the same. So maybe it was breaking up twelve eleven into twelve eleven and twelve twelve. Twelve point thirteen, insurance, seller shall, what you see is what's here. This, there is, it's all in red.
Where are you?
Starting on your page seventeen, twelve point thirteen, insurance. From there, through your page eighteen to, through twelve fourteen, twelve fifteen, twelve sixteen, twelve seventeen, twelve eighteen, all of that is in red.
Which means that.
Which means.
Those were, those were changes that were agreed to.
Those were changes agreed to. Looks like, for example, automobile bodily injury.
All of that.
Yeah, liability was there, but the rest is red. And I don't know, it's a.
And I notice, I notice it's like licenses and fees in twelve six point sixteen. You know, again, it states that the seller has to obtain all the licenses and permits and that sort of thing.
And some of this is formatting.
Seller must make all books, accounts, data records, reports, files, and everything else.
Really, I think it's basically, it appears to be formatting.
What about indemnification? Any changes there?
Which, I mean, indent, next one, oh, next one, let's see, indemnification. Yes, it's all in red, but let me see, again, it looks like formatting changes from what I can tell by the margin of. And that gets us to.
The seller shall defend, identify, and hold harmless to buyer from any and all remains relating to wages, overtime, other employee benefits. In other words, it's just, a lot of it seems to be restating that it's an agreement, but it's not, that we're partners.
I know the sense of open-ended liability for the town was the essential thing that was.
So what's our next step?
We need a public hearing if we promise them that at town meeting. They're willing to come, we'll spend the time. I would like to propose next Monday, but maybe they're trying to alter your, alternate your meeting day. But I am concerned about the expediency.
I think we should make a list of things that we're concerned about and maybe find one review and one best that can go to Donna's office and say, this is what we want to see in there.
Donna is on vacation now, this week. They.
Will she be back next week?
She will be back next week, but just to repeat, I know John Murphy at the next amp stated again tonight that they, they they're very concerned about the time. And he said, depending on what you let me know tonight, we may go in another direction. I didn't press.
Well, we can have a hearing without having the finalized contract. I feel we can have a hearing without, the town has to trust we're going negotiating in due faith. But I don't, we said we would give them a hearing, so I want to give them the hearing. I don't want to be just hung up because we haven't had a town hearing.
Yeah, I think I agree, you can say, no, we're per to have it even in this late stage of contract negotiation. But the town part of what's going on, so that when we do make a decision, we can add our public hearing.
Yeah, that doesn't preclude that we can't try to meet soon together with Donna or represent her office.
Well, and if the next amp representative or representatives are here at the public hearing, you could also discuss it, then make sense of they're saying, we've gotten this far, we'll go back and change it. Or that's not something we can change. Do you kind of know?
Mary, I'd like to talk to you about something totally different. I don't mean to put you on the spot. But if this was in my company, I would say, send it back to the lawyer. I don't want to redo this.
I tried to do it, they would.
No, just let me finish.
Sorry.
I could look at this in about a quarter of the time if she did track changes. Now, if they do not know how to do track changes.
No, they do, Mary.
But it's so perfect. When they take something out, I can see what they took out. I don't just see what they put in. And we've said this to her so many times, and I'm kind of infuriated. I'm a fish out of water with this kind of information as it is. And to not know what's in front of me is really very, very difficult.
And I do appreciate that, and I think when I emailed you, I laid out how I might do it, but I don't remember. I said I could also print you up these copies. I know what happened is, she was on vacation this week. She came in to send this out to us today for the, tonight's meeting. As she left, she asked her assistant to make a few extra changes. The assistant made a few extra changes and sent me the final copy, used this one. But it didn't have the track changes on it, which may have been Donna's intention. I called the assistant back. She had already left. The other person at the office was not able to get into any of these.
Did she use track changes on her first one?
Yes, she did.
Does it, is it, what I'm trying to get at, is it a subtle difference? Did she simply highlight the words and said, I removed this word?
No, no, there's your margin.
Track changes.
Track changes, margin, no.
So if I looked at that document in Word, it would say, Donna McNich go delete it.
Well.
That's your track changes.
It says versions of that. I mean, there are a lot of strike throughs, there are new insertions.
Well, I feel kind of hung out on this because we wasted a lot of time. And I can't really contribute to this process because I don't have knowledge and information on what they took out and in that. It's really a good faith effort on their part, saying, I hope someone's paying attention.
Right, and Ron, I was a little conflicted because I know we've had issues here too of having more than one version of something. And that made it too confusing. So when you came in, I did say, do you think it would be best if I also did all of this?
That's right.
And it was sort of six of one, half a dozen.
How many pages is that?
This, well, it's the same, but this one is not double-sided.
Okay.
No, it's the same.
She made further changes, you told me, in the.
Yes, so this one is twenty-six, this one is twenty-five, which is to say, this is the final one. And then perhaps Donna handed it to her assistant, make these other little changes. I assume it should have come this way, but it didn't. Or maybe, there's the other possibility is that she asked her to send this one so that it could be signed. But also would have some little changes on it.
It's so easy just to say, accept changes in the whole document. You just say, accept all changes, and we could print out one without the markers in it. It's nothing. You can do it with your sleeve. So I always want to get track changes in the future.
And we do have them, and I can go now, I'll print a copy of this.
We're done. I mean, we've gone through it. But what it's doing is it's taking your time too, and you're a resource to the time. So if we're going to use her and she's sitting there at the keyboard doing this, track changes is just a ghost I follow.
She did do track changes, I believe. And I don't know, because this is their vacation week, and she actually came in just to do this so we would have it for tonight because we've been pushing and saying we wanted to move as quickly as possible. So I believe that probably what it is, because this didn't come with track changes, but I didn't get to talk to her assistant because they both came in and then left. And it was maybe forty minutes before I saw the email because I was on the phone and I was out doing some other things in the other part of the office, didn't know when it was going to arrive. So it may be that this one was intentionally sent without this so that if the board wanted to go ahead and say this was a copy ready to sign.
If I had both documents, the track changes and the final one, all I do is accept all the changes and do a document compare. It's another utility which says, helps the same document. It's perfectly the same. So there's a couple of utilities that I could have done some work on this and said, oh, these look like good changes. But I just see what she, I don't see what she did.
Ron, it occurs to me as you're talking about this, did she send the final as a Word document? I would have to go back and look as opposed to PDF.
Yes, I don't know.
If she sent it as a Word document, and if she did do track changes, then to print the final, they just went up and clicked printing without the track changes. They, if she sent a Word document, they may be sitting there. We just have to bring up Word document. Turn it back on and tell it to print with the track changes.
You're right.
But not if she sent the PDF.
But that add also, it looks like there's a little bit of change in the way that it's printed out, so. Would that indicate there were a few other changes in between?
But if they tracked them all, they should be there.
Well, what about this informational meeting?
I guess we need one. I mean, if we're serious about doing this.
I mean, I guess that's the question. I mean, are we serious about doing it?
You're talking about the public hearing.
I mean, and moving forward to get this.
Informational meeting is probably more.
Murphy probably deserves a call tomorrow saying that the select board is, is really behind wanting to get this done. And we have to set up an informational meeting if this is the date.
One thing occurs to me though is, in a prior meeting, Ron had some concerns that somebody who is a consultant in this field that would look it over in regards to the energy aspect of it might be something that we want to have done, could go concurrent, not.
might be something that we want to have done, could go concurrent, not one behind the other, but could be looking at it.
But Donna, sorry, Donna wanted that as part of her process.
But then at the end, Ron was saying, "It wouldn't be bad to have somebody look at that from that point of view before you go sort of sign it."
Has Donna looked into it from her end with that technical brand behind her, or no? Is this just a legal lease?
This is a legal lease, but I did tell her that, that what you preferred was that she worked directly with Next Am. If she felt that she absolutely did need an energy consultant, to let us know, that would probably be approved.
That sounds reasonable.
But we don't, I know we don't want that to stay the most.
And I think we...
But we want it to keep moving.
Yeah.
My only other thought on it, and it's nothing negative about Donna, would we want to have, is there an attorney in North Hampton that's worked through some of this stuff? Because they've already done some of the soul finding.
I know that Donna has worked on some other net metering contracts and has worked with consultants on some other net metering contracts, but each one can be a little different, each party offering is a little different.
Did she feel comfortable with this?
She, I think...
Oh, there's an email here. "Today at 1:23 PM, Mary attaches a clean copy of the agreement and a redline copy showing all the changes agreed to. The one paragraph that Next Am would not agree to was 5.4.1, which provided that if this agreement was not economically beneficial to Ashville, then it could be planned. In order for this agreement to be not economically beneficial to Ashville, electricity costs will need to decrease to the rate Ashville will be paying minus the net metering credit. I do not believe this is likely to happen. I did want the clause, you know, because twenty years is a long time and no one ever knows. Next Am would not agree to that provision, but was willing to agree to all the other changes I requested. Nor agrees with 4.7 to 5.4.1, then the agreement is ready to be signed. I'll be on vacation for the remainder of the week, Donna."
So it sounds like this is a...
Five point, well, they wouldn't agree to it, so she would sign it there.
Okay.
But it's probably in the track changes copy that they would agree to. Is there a 5.4.1?
I would think I would have, would you mind if I pull that? No, it's not, it's not in this copy. But I know I had talked to her before about the changes she was going to be pressing on.
It does sound like she...
Basically, termination without harm and...
This is a plea though.
Without particular cause.
I do think there are three or four points that we need to go over with town council.
Specifically, which one?
Well, about us having...
Having a year if it goes down.
Having a year if it goes down and those sorts of things. I mean, and then again, if you don't try them, or do we just have the informational meeting and then in negotiation, just try to get those wrapped in?
Well, and if I may just say again, sorry, but it was calling Donna and saying that they, they were ready to agree quickly. All of this, what one had hoped initially, like it would be a law process, was not in part because of their urgency because of the closing cap. So, in terms of how that relates to your next step, they're related as to...
I do believe they were calling tomorrow, telling us we're having a meeting and we're just a hair shy of signing. They need to know for, and that we will have a hearing, public information next Monday. If we're slower than that, I think we'll lose it.
I think asking them, you know, we're assuming risk here, just as they are. I think asking them to, you know, if something were to happen which would damage this facility beyond repair, asking them to continue giving us electricity at whatever discount for however long, seems unreasonable. But I mean, Todd, let's say this profit or venture generates ten percent, they're giving away one percent of their profit to the whole community, so that they can get something, it's a little tiny whole community. Then all they have to do is set aside a little profit in a reserve account to cover the eventuality, and it's little, little, because it's one-twentieth, it's a year. In the eventuality of going out of business, you know, or something like that, you know, it doesn't seem like too much to ask. To make them carry us twenty years, maybe you're right, but I think there is some obligation. I mean, what concerns me most about this whole document is the arbitration mediation, the dispute resolution. Because you will spend, an attorney pays, and arbitrators and mediators, ten times what you're going to save on this electricity if you get into some little screw-up that come over this contract.
And take the odds to clear out.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be a mess, it wouldn't work. It wouldn't.
So, you know, is this, is this just a trading chip to try and get the percentage higher?
I think it's a chip to show that we're concerned with the security of this contract, you know.
The place I was heading to before is, because it's twenty years, is there another attorney, North Hampton, Copman Page, pick anybody and say, "Look through this, do you have any suggestions?" You know, you can miss things, and they may pick out something that nobody else noticed before, only because it's twenty years, if it's three years, you can, that is bigger risks, but it's a twenty-year. And it's just the thought, if we couldn't get a consultant from an energy side, then just have another attorney, much like you go to a doctor for a second opinion, say, "Do you see anything you would recommend?" And you could ask Donna about it, and say, you know, "We've got a second opinion, discuss this twenty years because we don't trust what she gave us."
When is she back?
She said she's gone all this week.
The fourth week.
Yep, and just so the board knows, I'm only here for the day tomorrow, and that's it.
You're gone for the rest of the week too?
I absolutely am. Sorry.
I am.
In no uncertain terms.
I, I, sorry, Ron.
I tend to think it would be prudent to just send this off to Copman and Page. Just say, "For your review, we're looking for a second opinion on this, and we want to move swiftly, and since Donna's on vacation, we could probably have this back by Friday, or at least by next Monday."
So, will one of you do that, so it'll go back to you, because I will not be here, I will not be checking the email, and I've...
Well, if you sent, if you sent it, why not today?
All the authorities believe, I really do.
If she could just forward the email that has this document.
Can I forward our town council's work to? I'm confused. We can either forward the original that came to us from Next Am to Copman and Page. Is it fine to forward an email that says it comes from our town council to Copman and Page?
I can do this one, forward this clean copy.
No, I was going to say, if you forwarded whatever this came from Donna, then I would, one of us, I, Tom, Ron, could then forward this to Copman and Page and say, you know, "We're looking for a second opinion, you know, do we need anything else? Any advice?"
I think that would be prudent, and I think it would be fine, and I don't think it would be very expensive.
And we could ask them to send it back to the select board, and then we'll all get the copy back quickly, and Mary will also get a copy, because that's a real...
And then ask them to reply and share changes.
There you go. Who's going to do that?
Paulette.
Before we get to this, well, my concern is, you're going to go to a doctor, two different doctors who are going to give you two different opinions, and you're going to be paralyzed. And in my opinion, that one, indemnification, it's going to be written this way, another, it's going to be written this way. I don't know that we've gone to the best attorney for this particular expertise as required in this contract, but I'd be very nervous about getting a second opinion, it's just going to slow us down so much on this stuff. And I don't know how to handle, one's going to say this, and the other's going to say that, and then when it comes time to defending the contract, if you ever have to defend it with the attorney, they're going to say, "Yeah, well, we wouldn't be in this position if you didn't listen to lawyer A or lawyer B," you know, so... I can, you know, whatever you guys decide, go for it, but I'm nervous about doing that. And the time required, now you've got two attorneys, you're going to visit both of them. I mean, I'd rather have you go visit with Donna Monday morning, you know, with someone from the group here, and then have the meeting, the public meeting in the afternoon, and engage them to the best of our ability.
It's easy enough, I think, to explain you're looking for a second opinion in the sense of, is there, have you missed anything?
Anything glaring.
Is there anything glaring that, given this type of contract for this net metering and everything, if it doesn't experience, have we missed anything?
I'd be very clear with Paulette, if you did do that...
We don't want it rewritten.
That this is, as received from our town council, we're interested in a second opinion, and...
We're not interested in reinventing the wheel.
Yeah. Please do track changes, and if you have experience, if they don't have any experience in this, I don't want to send it to Donna. Right? Doesn't make any sense.
Hope I can call first.
We don't need Latin terms in here, we don't need any of that, you know, that's...
I can call first.
And I would say to try to get this completed by Friday, or this week, so that we can have it in hand.
My guess is that Donna's not the only lawyer on vacation, but they're big enough, they're big enough firm.
All right, so Paulette, I will send you just the...
Fine version.
The fine version that you saw, just, right now, if I have it as a PDF, there's nothing I can do, but I will send that. Whatever form I have it in, I will attach it in the email to you.
You might want to send it also, the Word document that had the track changes to Paulette, and she could take a quick glance at it, because as I read her email, it sounds like she sent you a clean copy. Where she said that...
Yes, but then Tina sent me a copy saying there were some problems with this one, I made some changes, this is the final. So, we could have had three here tonight. Well, again, we have asked, we have really pushed to get it on our own schedule because of the...
I appreciate it, Chris, I stepped up in the place.
So, are we agreeing to, do we agree to send this off to Paulette? Paulette, you try with that?
Yes, let me just ask Mary a question. If you could, could after our meeting this evening, just, even if it's whatever last email you got that has this in it, just send to me, I would never forward Donna's email and all of that stuff. I would just be grabbing the document, and I'm trying to make it as easy as possible for you to do, and send it. So, what I will do is, I will call them first thing tomorrow morning. I mean, I'll call Copman at nine, so the sooner I can get it rolling, if they're doing extra vacation time, we might have a shot at getting this back.
I'll need to, right, what you need is the clean copy, and if you give them directions just to look over it, but don't be feeling like you need to read back the Word.
Now, Ron, did you, did you want, Mary, to email the track changes so you could have a look see?
No, now it's going to the next attorney, let them do their thing, and let's...
Because there aren't any initiatives applied with that.
Well, the only problem is if it's a PDF, and that's, then it's like, oh my God, now we're going to see it written down, you know, crazy stuff. Hopefully, there won't be any changes.
Okay, what about setting a date for this informational?
And this one, just as far as Copman, we're looking for a second opinion, this is net metering, it's twenty years. Have we missed anything? Is there anything glaring?
And it's been through our attorney.
It's been through, it's been through our attorney, been through town.
We'd like to get this back by Friday, because if they were to say it's going to take three weeks, the guy who's working on it, you know, that, then I'm interested.
I agree that, you know, we need to be prudent and move with caution. It might be, I'd imagine, more than I would think that we could do it expeditiously, but my sense is that if we're not prepared to finalize and sign something by next week, then it might be too late.
Exactly, so you have to tie that up right away.
But this informational meeting goes a long way in doing that, right, by showing an earnest attempt to get through the public process.
Well, what they are concerned about is that it's out of our hands, the cap is about to close, then they won't put their facility. There's a, it's divided in sections, one co is one section. Now, can I prove this? No, I do just know how many times they've called and how they sent them, and I've been talking to them for months.
They've been saying the same thing to us since the first day that we have it.
But the level of...
Anxiety.
Anxiety is way better at the moment, and I believe it is because once that cap closes, that's...
We can't be intimidated by that.
No, it's not, but they have, they have, they said they will do it immediately.
If we don't get it, they'll...
And try to get it from someone else, so they don't have the facility.
Because they have on the first gangland, if somebody else can pull it off quicker, they'll go there.
And absolutely, you don't have to respond to that, just to be clear though, it may not be hearing.
In the worst case scenario, we'd get it for twenty percent.
Right, not as a host.
Not if we won't be the host, we'll get a twenty percent discount.
And they do find someone to do it in time, and they get in under the cap, which, fair use.
We're really moving as fast as I feel comfortable moving, because any decisions that I generally make when I feel like I'm under the gun, I regret and delay the date.
And I appreciate that, and like I said, you know, we don't have to even take action on it. The worst-case scenario is, we don't get the higher discount, we don't want this.
Well, I think it's worth taking care of, and it was on one of our priorities, or it was one of our top priorities to, when we reorganized, to get this, I don't want to get this scratched off the list.
So you're not going to go to night and day meetings, that's kind of off-located.
With the forty-eight hour notice, that's kind of hard.
It's every day.
Just revolve it, just revolve it.
So, let's figure out the date for this informational, because somebody's going to have to write their article about it and put it in a newspaper. Next Monday or next Wednesday?
Monday.
Both are good for me.
Who's writing the article, and how are you going to get it out? Do you have to have some number of days' notice for an informational meeting? So it's not really technically a public hearing?
And I think we should assume that we can send information out to a reporter, but we should also probably place an ad if you want to be sure, because we have no control over it.
And a question, what did we, what did we promise?
Information we promised, I mean...
Tom said we would have, at the town meeting, he said it would be opened up to the public.
Okay.
So you can place an ad in the newspaper, or we can just put a poster, you know, at the bulletin boards in town.
I think if you send an email to Jimmy Ray and to Diane Francaccio at The Recorder and put a half a page notice on the website.
All tomorrow?
Well, it'll be the same thing, we'll do all three places, right? Same information, you're going to post it.
Yes.
No, okay.
Lynn, are you working tomorrow?
No. What is it, the question?
We are, it's just...
I know, I know, it's the holiday week, I mean, the world's going to come to a... No, it's time to take time off.
Nancy's got on service.
Oh, Nancy's got...
So you sent an email to Jimmy Ray and Diane, and focus a half page?
Well, just the same type of information, just put it on the website, just post it on the website, would that be enough?
Mary, can we just make it a meeting? Like, you know, you know, when you do like, just make it a meeting, like a newsletter or meeting, informational thing, and it'll just, it won't be on the first page, but at least...
but at least show up on the left-hand column.
The left, right.
And we'll have to post a select board meeting, right?
For the...
And that, so there's a couple sentences. I mean, you don't have to go into a paragraph. Talk about net metering, credit purchase, as agreed by the article or as discussed in the article. They handle that, you know, just something where...
Right, but isn't it the same notice? The informational meeting is going to be a select board meeting. So I'll post a select board meeting and the first thing I'll put at the top is net metering, contract, informational meeting, posted by a select board. That'd really be your only business?
Yeah.
But it would be great if it was in the paper. So even if you sent that same notice to Jimmy, they had a question, they could call once.
As long as, you know, that'll be up to them because I'm transparent, so if she doesn't come through the paper, goes to bed, which thing is getting out of sight.
So what day is this gonna be on?
Monday, the 8th, 7 o'clock.
How quickly can we really catch people? You know, by the time they discover this?
How many people are gonna come?
Oh, that's kind of my question. Even if we gave them two or three weeks notice, I don't know. That's kind of my speculation.
I think if we had a response from town council the first week that she had the information, then we'd be in a completely different situation. We would be at the same point two weeks...
But we did, we did have a response from her and the response came back to the board that there were issues with the contract and that to be thorough, she would like to consult with someone. They decided not, decided to ask her to speak directly.
So that, but there's no sense looking backwards on it. Here's where we are today. But let's set this meeting up. And you're right. I don't know that the number of people at an informational meeting will be as many as we have right here now. But the opportunity is there.
On the chance that compliment, compliment page gets back to us, would we want to have a second agenda item for the board to look at the contract? If the only item is the informational meeting, would you wanna look? When we're done with that, do we wanna look at that contract? Or would just we all get it? Well, I was gonna make the suggestion that the board meeting be two parts. The first part, the informational meeting. Next amp would be here, probably H. Paul would be here. Probably you guys would be here discussing. Maybe even throw out if there's something you wanna get next amp to talk about right there. And then the second part of the meeting would be, select board discusses perhaps...
Hold on, come on, make uncomfortable executive session.
Executive session to discuss. Can you go into executive session to discuss a contract? You can...
Isn't that one of the...
Lawsuit and then only...
I thought there was something...
Is there one for contract here?
Negotiation.
It would seem that if you, if the second opinion discovers problems that are critical, then it's gonna be a...
There is under number 10. It says to discuss trade secrets or confidential or proprietary information regarding activities by a governmental body as an energy supplier, municipal aggregator, or energy cooperative. If an open session will adversely affect conducting business relative to other entities making, signing, or distributing energy.
But we've already in this contract that all documents have to be public.
So I don't know.
We don't have to go to executive session.
Yeah, we don't, I guess.
Not pretty far tonight.
If they're okay with it.
That is a tough way to negotiate.
What do you want to do? So make it two parts. Have a public hearing at 7 o'clock. Public meeting, informational meeting at 7 o'clock. And then the only other agenda item will be...
Potential signing of the contract?
Um, negotiation.
Negotiation. Contract review or...
Contract review.
That's not like the contract review. Negotiation and discussion, that would be...
That isn't enough, so what? Okay. And we're gonna go on that? Make a motion to do the same? It's fine. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
And Mary, are you able to contact Donna Murphy tomorrow to surprise them?
I'll send him an email tonight before I leave.
Okay.
And I'll send Donna one as well. Does she want to know about coming to board meeting?
Good.
So the wrinkle might be that we want next amp to be here Monday. So do we need to give Mary the information that would basically say if she's talking to them and they say they can't come Monday, they come Sunday? They said they'll come anytime I said it. Because they tell you can't, I'll be there anytime you say. All right.
They are at our beck and call.
There we go. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't...
All right.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Hello. How are you? Thanks for getting us through it.
It's hot.
It's only five minutes of 10. We may not get through the whole agenda tonight. Because I was almost exhausted when I got here.
You didn't think you could tack it on to next Monday? No. Call it. No, the problem is you can't, no, no. Because it has to be posted tomorrow.
Let's discuss, let's, the old business. Let's discuss our Saturday meeting, June 29. I made some notes on Saturday. I'll be damned if I forgot to bring Jimmy up to use his minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're very short. Very good. So you got a tour after, you did the first half, second?
Yes, backwards.
So that's all right. We didn't walk that way.
No. But I got to walk all along. We faced the dam.
Faced the spillway.
Right, I was on the right side. We walked all the way down the lawn there to see the toe, the dam and the trees that are growing and all that. And we served around the dam where the water flows. So the weeds that are part of the issue to be dealt with.
I didn't realize how big a mess that was right there. Did you notice in the spillway where the water's coming right out of the stump?
Yes.
There's like two of them around there.
I saw one, but I can't say I noticed the other two.
So that, those are really kind of the big, the big things.
That and I think the business was, they don't like the top of the dam. Where people walk, it starts to get belling. And they prefer flat or at least don't like it a little bit. I think as people walk, it just naturally happens. So it's probably really ongoing. Every couple of years, maybe.
Alden Gray, since you went there. Alden had spoken about holes in the stone where the water was pouring out. You know, actually bypassing the spillway. About a procedure where they drilled in once before.
Silicone injection.
And did a silicone injection. And he seems to think that where the water's coming out now looks like the identical places that they had done that prior.
So it lasts for a number of years?
Twenty-five years or something like that. I don't seem to recall exactly how much, but yeah.
And he was talking about betonite and all this. Even the betonite and kryptonite and stuff like that, that kind of boost track. But anything to stop the water from, I mean, a big cork would work for me if it did cost enough. Ron, you had spoken about on the west side of the dam heading towards Nolans, that we need a maintenance easement. And later that afternoon, I was in the company of Phil Nolan. And I mentioned it to him. And he said, "Well, just do whatever you want." And I said, "Well, it's great that you like that, Phil, but you don't." But I said, "We're never quite sure what the next owner will be." I said, "The town of Asheville's gonna be around a long time." And he said, "You know, that's a good point. Why don't you guys write up what you want and I'll sign it?"
Good. He knew our arena great.
So if we need a 20 or 25-foot, whatever we need there, maintenance easement, isn't that what you referred to it as?
Yeah, they were talking about a 20-foot at the base of that guy. You know, something that could be mowed.
Going out from the toe?
Going out from the toe towards Main Street, yeah. Wrapping around, basically.
Starting at the west end of the spillway and...
Going all the way around. And, which I find kind of interesting because when the dam was built, they refer to vegetation down there and such. You know, trees and stuff. So I mean, yeah, a lot have grown up since, but there were, there were some there. So this is kind of an afterthought more on their part, the engineers. But I think what would be prudent is whoever's managing this, if you want, I can do it, is to actually walk it through and share within the area so you can see it. Get his confirms with the concept of it. And then the very most important thing is to get that engineer back to talk about permitting. Because you have to, you can get into a lot of trouble if you don't permit this entire project. I think it's relatively short change. It's in that 15,000 that we've already approved. That might be half of it. I don't have any idea. But you get them up here to consider it, give you a proposal, and you say, "Okay, look at these trees. Look at this report, these big trees that they want to kind of... This isn't reasonable." I mean, you know, the dam is six inches at that end of the plain. These are beautiful oaks, you know? And let's work our way half all in there. Talk about silicone injection. Say, "Listen, we're pretty serious about gearing this up this year and time for next year's inspection. Give us a sense." You know, and I've worked with people that way in the past. You know, I think if we make it a formal select board meeting, it'll be hard to coordinate as it was this last time. But I can keep coming back and telling you, giving you guys practice. Or any of you guys can do it instead. But I think who does it has to run to the finish line with it and try to mobilize.
Well, I didn't mean to get in the way.
No, you didn't talk about this.
And then, we're talking to Phil and I'm concerned.
And that's great.
I'm concerned that it not be dropped on the side. And I think it should be done if the easement is available to be signed. I think it would behoove us to do it as quickly as we can. I mean, if it's, let's get it done. And then, wouldn't that be a great thing to say? If we've already taken out all this junk?
Yeah.
I'd be concerned about the maintenance easement if I were the owner of the property, given those big trees. Because I didn't, I didn't really have money. You meant the trees. I thought you meant the other...
The little squirrels.
Yeah, and that could come, it's an awful surprise.
So I would walk that with Phil beforehand and I open that sort of thing.
We all do.
And I would see if we could do that easement in writing without a plan or the benefit of a further survey because that'll cost more money. So describe it, maybe describe it as per the GZA plans, 20 feet to the south of the existing dugout. Commencing at this point, I've written up those things in the past. And then access easement going along the decker machine where whoever's land that is on, whether it's on Deckers or on Phil's. I think I understand that the driveway is Deckers and the non-driveway parking area was Phil's.
Well, Phil was saying that there was already an easement, but I think the easement's for the vote, right?
Yeah, I think so too. And I did some preliminary research and I didn't see the easement. I thought it would stick right out there and I'd see it, but...
And when we walked along that west side, as we have, I'll say about halfway to Nolans, there's a place in there, and I don't know if you all got that far, there's cattails growing, which tells me that's not sort of very dry. So something's puddling. And Tom said he thought there was a drainage from the state that's going, because you look down, it's like a little valley in there. And there's a drainage going along in there. But something's puddling or that cattails wouldn't be growing there unless there's a lovely little spring in there or something.
I think if you took a scroll down and were just about where the sign that says Historic District, that you can hardly read because the trees are growing up and running, I think there's a culvert right there that comes across.
But it don't say.
And I'm pretty sure that I remember that somebody used to go pick up the winter sand off the road and make that carpet model as a little bit. I think that was a Ford garage or something. Anything more sort of deal. So I think it kind of pushed that over is what I'm saying. But I think, I think the culvert, it may be a little west of that sign, but it's up there. Because remember when, well, by what used to be Judy's, the water used to come down through there like...
Off the fields.
Oh.
Yeah. And it does, and now it goes into a drain, yeah.
But if it's a retention or detention basin down there or if it flows to the South River, it doesn't really matter. I mean, if it's, if it gets cold enough in the wintertime, you can come in there with a, it doesn't have to be a big tractor and just knock those cattails down and such. So we might have to time just right. But they just don't want the roots from the trees growing in that area compromising the dam. The cattails, I don't think they...
And there's, yeah, in that area, there's a lot of things going on, you know, from the toe up. There's a lot of stuff growing down there. You can see that, shouldn't we?
We talked about this. It may just need going to the Conservation Commission to get some type of maintenance. If that water's swollen there. Especially, especially.
I think you're within a jurisdiction boundary there anyway, regardless of what the spot's wet or not.
So have, do we wanna make a decision on how to proceed? I would be all set if you were willing, Ron, to start working on getting that easement going with Phil. I would think that would be a huge first step.
Yep. I'll issue that first. I'd be glad to do that.
And I think that we're trying to fit in, in my mind, just throwing stuff at the wall. In my mind, if we could do that maintenance and get that brush out of there, the same firm could get some of the brush off of that retaining wall. You know, if we went out to bid, had somebody with a chipper come in, cut that stuff out, throw it through chipper and go over to the retaining wall on the town side or maybe not put the big stuff in right now, but at least get all that little brush and crap out of there, throw it through to it, it's gone. And that would make a big enough project that you could anchor it up. I really don't feel that you need to be thinking about the Highway Department doing this job. Tommy's feeling a lot of pressure that he's behind. He's short a man. We're trying to come up with a situation to, I think. And we have money in the account so we could put a request out for proposals. You know, once we decide what to do.
Let's get the easement lined up first. We have to make it real with Donna. You know, she's a real estate lawyer too. And let's make sure we can do that. Because we might find that we have to eat some of the cost in a survey if I can't do it with words. I think I can do it just with words.
And we're, we're in a pretty good position, I think. Is that this isn't a project that's upon us and saying, "Oh, hell, how are we gonna pay for any of it?" upon us and saying, oh hell, how are we going to pay for any of it? We've already made that commitment, so...
Right. Don't we have people in town that do those kind of services, where they come in and they've got chipper's and they can cut that stuff down? The real question to me would be the roots, because you don't want to go, you sort of want the trees not to grow, but you don't want to go digging into that base of the dam to take the roots out if the trees are, you know...
If you have a maintenance program and just keep giving it a haircut, eventually the vegetative growth will stop, you know, the, the stuff coming out from the tree, you know, the tree, whatever.
Got you. Okay. Because we wouldn't want to be digging those out, that would...
Not that compromise.
Yeah, but much for...
So just nice and flat.
But what, what are the procurement?
And you've done that, doesn't work.
Five thousand dollars?
What do you think?
Five, is it five thousand dollars, is it, we need to go out to bids?
I think if you can do quotes at five and bids at ten, the difference between quotes and bids being, it's a big monoformality.
Five thousand dollars, you have to get three quotes, right? If it's ten thousand dollars or more, you have to bid.
Yep.
What's that?
You call it a bid.
Right, right.
And that's a longer process, a publishing process, where you can have the quotes where it's...
So maybe breaking them apart isn't a bad idea either, because you can say, you know, go clean out this debris we want off the wall, and then it may take a little bit longer to...
Well, we're not out to feather, we're not out to necessarily feather anybody's nest, but I certainly would like to get the job done.
We'll see what it takes, maybe we don't have the money, and we could use volunteers, I mean, we did a pretty good job back there.
Would you agree?
And, you know, I don't want to rely on volunteers, but absolutely, we see the tax act.
Aye.
So, but we'll get quotes after, we'll have what's...
So, if you agree with that, that'd be awesome.
And let me just clarify, you're pursuing with Mr. Nolan?
The easement, the maintenance easement with Mr. Nolan.
Was there a decision about quotes, bids, et cetera?
For quotes, not yet.
Not yet.
First, we got to create these, we're telling them to get the quotes.
Is there anything else we should move forward with as far as the retaining wall?
Other than getting some of that stuff that's growing on it off, so it stops causing further damage?
I hope so.
Well, or not going to move it, you know, in the next month or so, it would seem you'd like to get those things to stop making it worse.
I guess where I'm going is certainly cutting the brush down, I can't believe that it would be any hindrance, I mean, it would be a bad thing for us to do. Should we move to engage in, at some point, we're going to have to do some engineering besides us also scratching our head, figuring out what's going on.
There's a preliminary step we need to do, in my opinion, and I've looked at the documents, the old documents, the acceptance of the road, and all these different things that Alden was talking about, and I feel fairly comfortable with the fact that there is that road in there for that first hundred feet, and that we have a parcel that's about a half acre in there. It seems pretty obvious to me, but I think I compromise the board's position and my position by making that a thing, you know? So someone has to tell us, and I can give all the documents to Donna, and she could tell us that it appears that that is your road, because if it's not our road, we have no business being in there on that particular wall for the first hundred feet. So I'm a little anxious about that myself.
So you need somebody to vet that and say, yes, that's right.
Yeah, or just to be exact, we need...
Where is it really, or?
Yeah. I mean, Alden thinks it, I think it, but it just seems, like shows, it shows that on the map, it doesn't show it on the assessor map, it does not. And it was written in by hand on the map, okay?
So does somebody need to go to the registry of deeds?
No, someone needs to offer a legal opinion, like a doctor saying, yes, it's my opinion, because it's in the road acceptance, it seems pretty clear to me, the way they reference everything, the end of the timing back in eighteen, whatever, and they talked about laying out and accepting the road, they talked about the votes on the acceptance of the road and everything, and it seems clear to me, but it wasn't on the survey plan, I don't know if you saw, I, Alden put that line on there, yeah? And so, and in fact, in the survey plan, it says that that little blacksmith shop that's in the corner there is, is unknown. So that's a big difference from calling it a public way. If the surveyors are so certain, why didn't they put that on the plan in the first part, in the first place? So I would suggest that, I have all the documents, I mean, I've fished them out of the road works and stuff like that, and talked to assessor, help me out.
Sandy, Jen?
Peter?
Peter, thank you, Peter Retainer, and he's, you know, he's right on top of all this stuff, so he helped me quite a bit get that. But I think all I need to do is say, hey, Donna, decent bunch of information, give me a, give me a home page letter saying...
That that is...
As it's the time is proper, because even if it was really bad and pressed, if we weren't messing up someone's wall and expending dollars, if we didn't own the road, or if we didn't have the right to that road. We do own the parcel, the half acre parcel.
Oh, that, that, that means so many times?
Yeah.
So it's the road, I'd agree with it, that makes sense to get verification.
Well, why don't, why don't you just pull that together, and next week that can get forwarded on to Donna and say, look at this stuff.
I could do that, I can...
She doesn't have to do a lot of research or accept it through a small packet that you sent her.
That's what I'm assuming, I'm going to give her a couple of letters or something and say, please find the closed information that I pulled together, this end, we want a legal opinion as to the ownership of this road, please quote us, you know, give us a sense of what it costs you to do that, and then you can get it done. I think it just seems really...
I mean, I hate to act relaxed, but I know Thanksgiving will be here before...
You know, and we won't be able to do anything, right? And... I suppose we can take the risk, too, I mean, I just don't want to be the one...
Hey, for a hundred and fifty bucks or whatever, it's, you know, three hundred bucks to know before we spend twenty thousand dollars?
Like, sounds pretty easy.
Is there anything in the town's records, for lending a better word, or statutes or something, that after a period of time when the road hasn't been used like that, does it revert to anything else?
Yeah, there's, there's a difference between what's formal action called discontinuance or abandoned, they're two different things. One, it's the action subsequent, but both of them can be arraigned in court, so it's not really a good defensible position. Now, if it was formally discontinued, that is, okay, but it, it hasn't, we see no evidence.
It just was ignored.
Yeah, it's just, it was turned into a pretty, pretty row of trees, you know, or something.
I remember discontinuing a few, trying to discontinue a few roads, and, I mean, at that time, Asheville wasn't going to discontinue any road if we wanted butter along, didn't want, even if it wasn't yours, even if you couldn't even walk down the road anymore. If there was a road, of course, it got to be your front, right? I mean, so...
So I will do, that was an act of futility, I remember that.
Dale Kirkpatrick.
I will send that, and I'll report back before explaining any more to Donna, and I'll bring a copy of a couple of letters where I requested it, a book for her.
Well, Donna's not going to look at it without costing them money, so I think that's a given.
Well, no, the couple of letters will say, please talk to me before you do this. Now, she's not in this one, but I'll send it this week, so it's on the desk, and then hopefully she'll get back to me, and I'll let you guys know.
Did you have anything else on the dam or the retaining wall, I mean, where?
No, no.
The only thing that Tom Cusson said to me, which he may or may not have already discussed with you, was the vegetation that's around where the water actually goes over the dam and down the rock and all of that, that getting rid of that may take a more substantial effort, considering the possibility of some herbicide, and what herbicide can you possibly put on it when it's in the water?
I doubt it.
And without then ending up with the herbicide in the water?
Because, yeah, that probably...
And yet, you don't want to be pulling them out with the stones and out of the...
I think if you had a dry time and you let the water down, you could pull...
Do it with the water down, so it's dry?
You could do a lot of stuff with the water down. I don't think it would be this year.
Yeah, I think...
Unless we're going to open the gate.
But there are buildings you can put in the water with special permits and stuff like that, I don't think we need to go there. And actually, that would have to take some coordination with the park commission, you know, maybe...
It's part of the permitting process, believe me.
And probably off into the fall when nobody's trying to swim in the lake, and just be better than that.
All right, so we're, we've got a, we've got a deal on that, that's good. It is ten twenty. You want to go back to the top and go over our June twenty-fourth minutes?
Well, if we're going to run out of time, and the town appointments, the remaining town appointments, I know we need one for the personnel board, I think we have a new list, the one for Priscilla Phelps for three years. It was held up because I went back to double check that she, yes, she did agree to three years, and yes, please do appoint her.
Oh, oh, oh.
And we need that appointment for our board. And the one for Ricky, I believe, is holding until Finance Committee needs one, because they've got it on their agenda.
Oh, right. Yes, thank you for mentioning Monday. Did we say that the public information meeting was going to be on the day that is also when the Finance Committee...
Finance is meeting.
Is meeting, well, but I'm supposed to be there to do, but I guess that's okay, I can be there, I can be here, I can be back and forth, there's transfers, end of season and computer transfers, they won't be complicated.
Two or three under a hundred dollars.
Yeah, presumably, I know they also have other business, just thinking about coordinating what else are they doing? They're doing the review of the request for subordination. So, yes, so I'm not sure they're up, but...
They're big, they're big boys and girls. They can, they can review that, all right?
Yeah, no, it's a study thing.
So the one, the one, the one appointment that you're concerned about is the personnel board?
Right, and the, the other one, could have asked Lester, but I did...
I did ask Lester.
Lester, he's on in front of the term.
He is on, okay.
Yes, I went to the Conservation Commission meeting.
And I did a little research regarding the person who's appointed to be their assistant that does their scribing and their minutes and all, and according to the personnel manual, the select board is the appointing authority, except library trustees appoint the library personnel, the sewer commission appoints their personnel, the same for parks and rep, board of assessors, um, the fire chief appoints the fire department personnel and the health, the health agent. So yes, we do appoint. So we skipped over that, we have a question.
Except, and, and I think that Tom Kirk's question about that one was, as with some others, you appointed, when they hired her, you appointed her to be hired for that position, and that's it, you appointed Julie to that one?
Last week, we took up these appointments, and thinkable laid out, and I think we just kind of went through the motions of doing it, so I don't, I don't, if you need an appointment for Priscilla that is, you know, you feel that you're, because you're going to meet again on Thursday, right? Aren't you meeting every week?
Well, we won't meet this Thursday, but we meet the following Wednesday, and we don't have anything, we're meeting on Wednesday when we're not meeting, the select board's not meeting. So we have a meeting coming up before we could appoint if we don't do it tonight, we need a select board.
And you're...
It's Priscilla for three years.
Right, but, and what's your quote to us off your notes there? I know she had your notes on, on, and that came out of, which personnel manual, the one that...
The current one.
The one that hasn't been approved yet.
No, the one that exists now.
The one that does exist now, not the one...
Right, right, and we...
You don't touch me.
No.
Well, let's, if we don't want to hold up progress on the personnel board, I would move to appoint Priscilla Phelps to the personnel board for, there's a three here.
Right.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The only other appointment that I can think of to bring up is I did meet with the Conservation Commission, I think it was Wednesday, what night was I in there? Was it Wednesday or Thursday?
Yeah, Wednesday.
And I went in to get some background, since we need to discuss it and know who was on, who was off, and I do have a copy here that adds some clarity. There's a note dated the twenty-fifth, says, this is the Asheville Select Board, effective June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, I resign my position on the Asheville Conservation Commission. I have enjoyed my tenure on the board and feel that it is, it was a privilege to serve the town. Willis J. Fair. So...
So Lester's filling in for his last...
Lester says he will stay.
Until?
Until we find somebody else, or we find somebody else, or the rest of the Conservation Commission finds somebody else. So, I mean, I thank them all for their service, and I told them that there was, I reminded them that it's supposed to be a term, not a sentence necessarily.
So do we appoint Lester to another term, and then when they get somebody else, he can resign at that point?
He can resign and do a mid-year, midterm, mid-month appointment, whatever we need to do.
But this term...
So that, that's going to make the Conservation Commission of Lester Garvin, Brian Clark, Janet Clark, Phil Lucier, and there's one more. Who am I missing?
Fessner.
Who?
Fessner.
Oh, David Fessner.
Did Janet get appointed already? I don't remember. I don't think she did.
Did we skip the whole thing?
No.
No, we did, everybody with Lester.
What was the date on the reservation? Thirty?
Thirty. Oh, the date, the letter was written the twenty-fifth, the date of his resignation effective the thirtieth. Do you need a copy of this for the add to the document, Lester?
We already thought she had one.
There's one right there.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Lester Garvin for a three-year term on the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Take up the rest of the appointments to a later date, a little bit like an elephant.
What about your open space ad hoc committee, that there when your appointment would have ended on the thirtieth, do we need to do that tonight?
I don't believe that's the other word. It's an ad hoc committee.
Wasn't it added in purple because we needed to do it?
It's added in purple because it hasn't been done.
Oh, all right.
I don't, I, that's the way I, I, I think it would have been red if it was expressed need, but maybe not.
Well, Priscilla was in green, so I thought, I thought she wanted us to do that.
I wouldn't have known that it was purple if you hadn't said so, I was thinking it was blue.
Do either of you have any information, or is that Ann trying to convey to us somehow to do that?
Um, no, she just says add the next one to the agenda. And agreement that there were some questions that would come back to her, like she had talked to Lester Garvin before sending this forward, there were some questions, so where she understood, there were still questions.
I think we got an email note from either Nancy or Laura, saying that they wanted to come in and discuss some of the appointments at some point.
Yes.
And we haven't had the time to do that. So, let's get these minutes behind us, we don't want to fall behind on minutes.
I've come up with some wording on six twenty-four, according to my notes, I'm sorry, July twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve, we had this one little hang up on the sec, the last paragraph on page two. And I just came up with some very simple words, I think, that are innocuous, and we should be able to get off with this one, because everything else we basically agreed with.
I thought I was assigned to go listen to it and come back, and I did, I typed something up.
Go for it, I can...
You can do it.
I typed it a lot, I listened to it at least three times.
God bless you.
Oh, and there's copies of, this is July twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve, is talking about, and on that paragraph.
Do you, do you want to go ahead with the other ones for a minute, and let me make us both a copy of the twenty-fifth? And do that one?
Well, we can read it over, I suppose, if you ask me. Well, we can read it over, I suppose, yes.
Yep. So, what I have proposed on.
Does anybody have a copy? Does anybody make a copy of, of the twenty-fifth?
Oh, they don't have a copy.
So maybe we don't need the copy of the twenty.
No, we're just, that, that last paragraph on page two.
Okay.
I've got, I separated it out, I listened to it twice, and made it into two little paragraphs. Because we're pulling everything's going on, and I listened to that period of time.
You didn't say cozy?
No, I didn't, I said close. Sometimes Priscilla was doing them from the recording, depending on what time you're listening to it, can be tough.
Now, just help me get to this place, um, it says, "Last paragraph, page two, replace with the following two paragraphs," so replace what with the following?
Replace the last paragraph on page two with the two paragraphs.
Where it starts with mention?
Right.
And ends with K and P?
Correct.
Okay, so let me, now that I have my brain.
That was the paragraph that back in two thousand and twelve, we all sorts of, I think the, something different was in that conversation, so I was very careful with it. And I did reference it to the, the copy you recently handed out of those minutes, not the older version from twelve.
The one we had last.
The one we had last week, yeah.
I, I guess I don't have an issue with the, the two paragraphs, I mean, they're, they're simple. Um, the, the, the first paragraph on page three, you said remove, look at, I mean, did you say it's a little too cozy for you?
No, I said it was a little too close.
Okay.
And then I said about the distance, and so I elaborated it, just because it followed my saying, it was a little too close.
I don't have a problem with either of those replacements.
Do you have a copy of this one?
I do, I should comment. I can send it to you in Word if you prefer, she can cut and paste instead of having a technical scratch, yeah, would that be helpful? So I'll send this exact thing to you, but in Word, I think.
Um, second, second line makes mention, rather than makes mentioned, uh, sorry, uh, the first paragraph that you suggest substituting, second line starts, that says, "It's given, makes mention, double in case, to be makes mention."
Yes, you're absolutely right. I'll correct that. Thank you.
Now, you know that this is in addition to the, the changes we had, taking quite a long time to discuss in that document, right?
The twenty-fourth, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just, yeah, let me just, those points, because I think everything else was fine, and so it was.
So I'll make a motion, if we're ready to, I'm not pushing anyone here, we will not make a motion to accept the amended minutes per our six twenty-four meeting and our seven one thirteen meeting, um, to the, uh, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve minutes, and, uh, that's it.
And I'm moving along with the bottom.
Yeah, well, this is, uh, the argument was made, this was before our little note was agreed upon, so we would not do that, but we could certainly add the amended, um, version to the document list, right?
We can do anything we want.
Yeah, we can, so, that's my motion.
Second. Any more discussion? These are the minutes of July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Beautiful. Before I run totally out of brainwaves, can we take up the minutes of June twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen?
Sure.
Keep getting the little message on the iPad here saying badly slow, and I'm right there with it.
I've got a few, I'll jump in there, or?
You'll, for it.
Okay, I didn't have any changes to the first page. I did say, at the end of the discussion on Robin Sherman, kind of after the subordination issue period, I inserted the sentence, "The suggestion was made that Robin would submit her subordination request in writing, so that the board may discuss an act accordingly." I mean, that's the way we left it, yes.
Right.
Otherwise, it just kind of hangs there like she just came and disappeared.
Right.
You want me to repeat that one more time? "The suggestion was made," because I don't believe we voted on it, "that Robin would submit her subordination request in writing, so that the board may discuss an act accordingly." Then, I, I probably got like just three more, and they're not very lengthy. Right under that, Judith Hamilton, owner of the Ashfield Lake House, requests to extend the liquor license operating hours, one AM to two AM on June twenty-ninth for a private wedding party, and I just added a sentence that said, "Discussions relating to neighbors' sensitivity ensued." I, I think it's important that this board expressed itself that way, you know, rather than just granting it, so I think that was a, just a small sentence. You got it, Lynn?
What's that?
You, you got that addition?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I said, um, under all business, uh, Kohler, the, the last sentence, Kohler contacted Noraki and Andrew Martin, landlords of the property, and I said, "Instead of in front, I just said south of the retaining wall."
Okay.
Because that's where they are, okay? And in front, couldn't infer either side, obviously. And then, the last edit I had was.
On the same page?
Uh, but it's at same page.
Okay.
At the very bottom, the last sentence, you say, "A discussion takes place as to how to pre-seed," and I think you.
Close.
And, uh, that was it, other than the very note on the very end, um, where the document list left eleven with nothing after, I don't think anything was intended, but.
No, that's where your minutes will go.
Oh, the amended minutes will go there. You had that in bold, do you see it, it's in bold, like there's certain emphasis on half of your document list? So I said unbold.
Yep.
And then the date in our little sentence at the end was seven one thirteen meeting, which is today. Is that right? I mean, is that how we're doing this, these documents, we're discussing amendment approval dated, but they are actually filed on the date of the setting.
That was just in there from the last time.
So that's just a quick run on my.
Okay.
Quick edits.
Follow that.
Yep, um, under mail, that Ashfield emergency science appeals, I think you probably meant with document ten after that, because document ten is our signals.
Yep.
The other thing that I was concerned with for the signals is, I don't know how we could have done it since it was mailed, but I wish the minutes had the signals in them as opposed to it's a document, I mean, I don't care if it stays a document, because you don't know what they are, and unless you request a copy of the document for the signals, you don't know what the new signals are.
I mean, I thought there was some, when we were asking Doug, there was some uncertainty, and we said, "You need to get that into the paper," you know, whatever it is.
And Tom, did you find the note?
I did.
Yeah.
Says, um, oh, the Ashfield News must be out today, huh? Publish the old emergency science signals instead of the new one forwarded by our EMD. New one attached, we will post and distribute copies from the office, I'd hope the Ashfield News would.
Retract it.
Retract it next month, and.
A little bit a month, right?
A little bit a month, so we talked today about getting them out to various places around town and everything, so.
And then, um.
If we're revising.
The other, the other thing in the Ashfield News is, under the select board notes, it says, "The generator, the generator was bought with twenty-five hundred dollars emergency management grant, not twenty-five thousand."
Oh, what's a good change?
Is the next page the new list of?
Select board notes not submitted by town or town offices at all.
And that's important, because we did.
Likely submitted as appear by Faye with me.
Sorry, do you mean to try, go ahead. They were bad, that they were very, very bad, we've already had people say the town should be ashamed to put this out there, it, I did talk to Faye after I wrote that up, uh, she called me back. The town had nothing to do with those select board notes, and the notes that Faye sent in had nothing, no resemblance to what geared in the paper.
So you did get to speak, you were away.
Yeah, she called after, I'd already put that in your folder, just before.
And it's in the actual.
We're, I was looking to see what the signal changes were.
But we wanted to read that and get it into the record, because it can be confusing for people, some people think that we do things directly, that, you know, that we have some control over that, we don't, obviously.
Could we, under mail, where it says the signals, since there's only six of them, just annotate them in there, so then it's part of the minutes as opposed to it just a document, leave it all as a document and all, but just due to the fact that probably the minutes will be up online before the Ashfield News gets to reprint what they really are, people who read that, you can see them.
So ten, you really wanted to cut and paste that entire thing and put in there? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Leave the whole.
Okay, right where, right where you get mail, and he says, "We list them, call it document ten, but then just list them right in there."
You can cut and paste, because that's not our document. I don't think, but maybe you can get a copy, I think, that from Doug.
I think so.
I'll see if I can get a copy of it, okay.
If I had a copy of this and took it home, I'd be happy to just retype it and send it to you along with the other one I've got to send you, if that would help, just to tie it up, and once you do a cut and paste.
So you can do a cut and paste, just making a note that we need to do that.
He gets sent the, okay, he knows.
All right.
As long as we still got one to send you. Okay, fine, no, I, I think just, yeah, there, I just think, they're kind of important. Thank you.
That you need a stone tablet or anything, so you must have it somewhere.
All right. Um, on page one, um, midway down under minutes, just above where it says Lukeard Expresses, there's a date, and I have a feeling it's just extraneous.
Oh, just above.
Oh, I see, just above, yeah, so I think that just comes up, yeah, and we think it might be.
It's supposed to throw somebody out, case.
It said, "We adjourn," don't we really put the time?
Yeah, it was.
It was.
There's no time there?
No, okay.
We adjourned.
That's usually a time. Um, the other thing I want to clear up is the paragraph right above adjourned, I did not accuse, after I cleared the error, Tom, in terms of Mary, I did not insinuate she did anything, I did a statement that people asked me questions, said they sent something, and then I said, "No, I never saw it." I did not insinuate Mary did anything wrong. I am concerned, on a different note, not to be included in the meeting minutes, that perhaps we need a technique for receiving mail and documenting in some kind of one-liner file, things that come in, they came from the date and whatever, as a point of reference, so if anybody ever does say, "I sent that, where is it?", we have a log of what arrived. I mean, mail can get lost.
That seems like that's another position for fifteen hours a week, follow.
I'm just saying, we could do it, or not, but anyway, not part of the minutes.
With another position, I would agree, absolutely, we can talk to you about it. Anytime, we are now in our thirty hours a week, and we are maxed.
Okay, it's just, it's just an idea in terms of somebody saying, "What happened to my, my mail?" Other than that, I didn't have anything.
I, I tell you what I.
How do I change that? Pardon, how do you want to change that?
Well, she said that really didn't have to do with the minutes, right?
Not that, no, my part was that I was not insinuating that Mary had done anything, I was only saying, "Somebody, different times, you told they sent something," I said, "No, I did not see it," so it's like point A and point C, B I don't know about, so I wasn't accusing Mary of anything.
I mean, it doesn't necessarily have.
Had something to that effect.
May not necessarily have anything to do with the minutes, follow that, but it's, I can see how Mary felt that you weren't saying anything like that, and in the heat of the discussion earlier, you know, we.
I'm not arguing with the personal feeling.
My, uh, I was always told it's a, it's a wonderful gift to tell somebody to go to hell in such a way they enjoy the trip, and, so it's, you know, it's how you word some of these things that could probably make it much better. And, and it goes for all of us, I mean, sometimes we just say things that just don't come out right, so. I, I need a clarification, and I, I bet somebody here can help me, and it may not have to do with the minutes, but I was doing the math last week when, when Robin Sherman had that brief time of, of trying to discuss about the Ashfield House, is it thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars on top of the two eighty-seven, five eighteen, or is it thirteen hundred?
Thirteen thousand.
Okay, because I, I did the math, and I had a number over, over, uh, three hundred thousand, and I said, "No, that's not right."
I, I always said thirteen hundred, but I.
No, there's two, she says thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand, so I had the right number written down, and that was fine.
She did.
No, besides that, I don't have any problems. Is there a motion to accept with the amendments?
So move. And to add, it is an amended document, and I know I'm on the bottom.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, yeah, we're, we're still caught up on thirteen, do we have a, we probably haven't had time this week to have an idea of how many of twelve's minutes.
No.
I still think, there must be a pretty short list at this point.
It is pretty short, and also there should be others showing up on two thirteen, I checked the, um, two thousand and thirteen, the website. I checked the 2013, the website, the end of the day today. I know.
There's still none there?
There's still not there. The ones you sent to 13, didn't have that sent back and forth with Charlie. I think he's just behind. We were having trouble with the computers that day, so we couldn't get the numbers out of them. But there should be more than, than sitting there for a bit.
There's either three or four.
Another thing that I forgot to bring, and I mentioned it to Ted Murray when I saw him on the street the other day, is that we have a draft, the draft of the audit report from Scanlon. And.
Is that some more?
It came, it came right.
Before I, you said you're there.
I think it was within hours of them receiving it, wasn't it? I mean, they must have had it sitting on the, and Mary just handed it to me. Must have been Wednesday or something. I, I did take the envelope. Ted said he didn't need to see it, you know, until the final draft. They're just going to review it and then maybe we could pass it around, but, but we want to get it. I mean, it's just kind of their draft, and it does say that they need to have a couple of, coming, have a couple of more discussions, I think, just to verify. With the collector.
Oh.
And, you know, just how they're perceiving things are done, or how they're being done. They just want to check a couple of things. And there's nothing too terrible there.
Interesting, because I don't think we changed anything.
Well, remember, they haven't done it in two years.
True.
And.
And it's definitely changed.
And it sounds, you know, that they're looking at it and perceive that it happened one way, and. And I think we've also had, I mean, Joyce is a change over the last two years, right? From Furcock. She wasn't our.
She personally was not. There was another Furcock accountant.
Right, so. Well, actually, it was Janet, wasn't it?
No, prior to Joyce, it was Liz from Furcock.
Right. Okay, so that's.
On that topic, though, we do have the engagement letter we've had to sign with back to them. They, we had that a while ago. I didn't have a chance to check with Ted Murray. What's it, sorry. Tom said that he had a copy of it, so I had just sent me another copy of the engagement.
So the, the audit report is in-house and?
I usually wait for the final document, too, because I don't want to be thumbing through it and looking for the edits after.
It's good to know it's almost there.
Right. So would you like to see the draft after I review it?
Sure, I'll take a look.
I'll send up a smoke signal, and you can see it from your house, and then I can leave it under a rock by the post office and you can pick it up.
Not if it's raining. Okay.
Couple of things, yes.
Maybe I can slide it to you at the picnic that I'm set.
Couple of things to sign. One is the audit engagement letter, which we should have signed back at the end of this, at the services, if they were going to forepress.
And that is in the envelope.
Yes, there's a copy here for you to sign. And a contractor authorized signatory listing for FEMA authorization to receive about $16,000, which is FEMA reimbursement, but it comes through the state, so you'll see state FEMA there, they have the reimbursement. And it's for the February blizzard. Laura Blakely will do the second page, but we need Chair of the Senate to do the first.
So this, the, so this is $16,000 to reimburse us for the $3,500 we just voted at special town meeting. Right? That was our overdraft on one road, so.
So don't need to sign the second. This one and this one is here.
So what's this one here? This is the.
That's the authorization to receive FEMA funds via FEMA for the February blizzard.
So this is so we can get a direct deposit.
There you go.
Anybody have an issue with us accepting money from the state?
Not tonight.
Take every bit of it. Well, I did have that thought that went through my mind when we were talking about this 127 pages that I don't get terribly invested in, but if it has to do with FEMA and this. I guess that's $186,000 or whatever.
We were just done two weeks ago, so we're not going to keep right.
We need to pay attention to this.
Sample is set, and then since Scanlon, what, was there, was there a problem with this engagement letter prior that it didn't get signed? Or they never gave us one, or?
And he said that, and I have not, I talked to Tom, who, Tom Scanlon, who said that, who said Ted Murray had the copy of the engagement letter. I tried calling Ted, didn't reach him, but I had also had Tom Scanlon send me the engagement letter. I think this goes way back to being able to process. It might have been one of those things that's somewhere till I talked to everybody involved, I'm not sure where. But they did have done the work that this was to.
We have $19,000 appropriated for audit services, and this says that audit fee for the town will be $11,750 for the year ending June 30th, 2012.
But that's why it was held up. Remember, we were asking for the waiver, so Ted had it. The amount of money would have been different if we did two years.
And we got the waiver, and by then we'd, we'd just been going.
Right, so Ted may have had it at the time as he drafted up the letter. He pressed a sign to get the waiver.
This is the correct amount, because we did get a waiver, we didn't have to hold.
It's July, isn't it?
First.
It's $11,750. There's some more money that can go into the general fund.
I think people would that forward with your chair and add to it for the next audit, which isn't that part of it.
Well, we're going every two years.
You're really going to say that?
Yeah. That's less money than we have to do.
Right.
Get that sucker off. It is 11 o'clock. Our next annual select board meeting, besides the one for next week, is the 17th. What, what, what do we have to go on that agenda?
I should have brought that file, I didn't.
You are here.
Five year open space plan markups and hazard dislocation plan markups, possibly the tech committee, who canceled for tonight.
Warrant, warrant. You got warrants?
No, that won't be warrants. You won't have the warrants.
Yeah, two, two weeks.
Oh, we'll have to sign them on the weekend.
Right, because you're meeting on Wednesday. Unless it's Monday, we can't go on Wednesday.
I'm just trying to think of what, if there's something that you won't be here, so.
I do have an issue that I want to be discussing tonight before we close, even if it's just to hand out a little information on this letter forwarded to the state legislature. So you guys could put that on the agenda for that week, too. You know, I mostly be handing out stuff, but I do want to take five minutes.
Tonight, yeah. Do you have any special topics for the 17th? I mean, we won't be a full board, but what we can take up.
That I'm aware of at this time, other than sooner or later, we will have to come back to the, as a board, we want to come back to the.
Position description?
Annual of all the descriptions. Oh, I, I have one thing left for this.
And Tom, and, and Tommy has his. I was just trying to get.
And, and can you look at the things you can get to tonight and see, for instance, the request for subordination is something.
Oh, yeah.
Concerned that that would be dealt with tonight.
She wanted to do that by July. Personally, I want to get some input from the finance committee on that, because they're, they're in front of that, and I think.
I know they're going to be discussing it on the 8th.
On the 8th. I was going to go to that meeting.
I was going to go to that meeting.
That's okay. I mean, I.
I mean, I already told the chair I'd be at that meeting, I'll be able to.
I, I just wanted to throw it out there on the agenda to open it up.
So I think that's a big agenda, I can just deal with this subordination on that day.
So is that on the 17th?
Maybe, maybe we want to invite the finance committee to come to that meeting, if we're going to want their input on that at that time.
Yeah, I, if there was any way we could meet on the 16th, I'd really appreciate that, but I will be out of town on the 17th. And I think this is an important subject to deliberate on and get their input and give them our input and figure out what we're going to do.
And I don't want to speak for the finance committee, but I do know in arranging this time, and I've been meeting them on the reserve, because I don't explain and talk about so forth. I believe that the chair said he was going to be away, and there was a great deal of difficulty. This was the only date they could come up with that they could meet.
The 8th.
The 8th. I don't know how far that's extended, but there's, I've been seeing the mails, there's a lot of difficulty getting the board together at this point.
Sure, all the summertime.
Yep.
Look at the problem for it.
I, I mean, if we need to move the date, if, you know, you want to make that.
Do we want to go back to Monday?
Or if you want to go to Monday just for that purpose.
I could do that. Why don't we do that? For the 15th, go to, for that meeting, so we could deal with this.
You should get that issue.
With the finance board, so we can act differently to.
Some of them to come, even if they don't have a quorum. Especially since we're not going.
Well, I think if they're discussing, I really think if they're discussing it on the 8th, if they just bring a recommendation to us. I mean, it doesn't have to be long, drawn out. All we need, I mean, that's what the finance committee does, is recommend.
Right.
And most of the, most of the time, people ignore it. But we can still listen to the recommendation just the same.
So we are going to change that meeting on the 17th to the 15th. Well, thank you for doing that. That's good. And then we will have a.
I don't want to change, just, we started? Don't have to change anything. So do you want to do the warrants Monday?
Yeah, we can do the warrants on maybe 15th.
Instead of 8th.
I'm just trying to remember what I changed, what I changed 15th to 17th.
That'll be.
We'll check.
I mean, you're not going to post it till next weekend, are you?
Okay.
All right, and you post it by Wednesday, next Monday, next Thursday.
But, so it would be.
Paulette, if you have one more thing you want to bring up?
It's, it's by way of liaison, and we can, I'll just briefly mention it, and I'll bring it up the next meeting, just to go over it again. I believe we made an error that we didn't mean to do, and it has to do with the fire department. And in the past couple of years, all of his utilities and that business was all rolled into expenses, just like we did for the highway department this year. And somehow, it was separated out in the annual town meeting. None of us picked up on it. It should, it had been a subaccount in prior years. So I was thinking we can correct that at whatever the next special town meeting is for year, the first one that comes along.
I thought, I thought the numbers came out just right.
The numbers are right, but he, his utility used to be, it was a subaccount of his expenses, not a line item that stood by itself. And that way, as he, that's how it was last year and the year before, and that's what we did for the highway department, so we've kind of undone his.
And I told, I talked to him back and forth, and I've talked to the accountant about it, and of course, the account tested about the lines as we voted them. And I also had an issue with our going to a special town meeting to change it later, which is what I first suggested that my team would do. And I told him it's possible that it was an error I made, but we went through a number of different versions and formats of it, and I thought that I remembered, but I'd have to go back through, I guess, the recordings or notes. There might have been a comment about one of the utilities separate, because we were talking about putting aside money to make changes there. I, I don't think that I would.
I don't think there's any reason to have to go back into the recordings or anything. I mean, the numbers, the dollars come out the same.
They do. It takes away flexibility that he.
Right, well.
And he had it in prior years. And so if, if I have my brothers, I'd like us to find a way to, to give it back to him the way it used to be, where that was a subaccount in his whole expenses.
I mean, we're talking about, about $7,900.
Right. But sometimes, if, if it turns out it could use a little less fuel, then he's got some money to use.
Well, it's either a special town meeting to melt it altogether, or when he runs out of other money and there's money left in utilities, it's a special town meeting to just transfer the money. So six of one or the other, it's, it's not an immovable object either.
Right. All I was saying is, the next time we have a special town meeting, whenever the first one comes up, then do it. Although, I wasn't trying to make the meeting boring.
No, 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 no.
If I made this recording when the accountant said, because I asked her about that, it actually sounds like the leader, he means it later is better, because she said it's difficult to go back in, that he starts putting in utilities here and the other account, and then you go back in and you change your pathway through here. That's more difficult for our audit team, so for it than doing it.
But I was trying to be more sensitive to his needs as he's going along, then really trying to find a way.
So at least before the next budgeting season, it has to be fit so that he affords me that flexibility again, that's what you're saying.
It's, well, for the, yes, because.
12 months is a really short time to, to work around a little problem like this. I mean, it's only 27 months. I mean, it's, okay.
So, and then just next year, just to note that it's a subaccount.
Yes.
It was, it was an.
It's not funny. We, we all looked at it, the finance committee, we sat it down, who knows how many times, you know, it's just one of those.
And if you look at the highway department, it says, you know, subaccount.
So I do, I mean, we just missed that, I think.
We just missed it.
Well, not necessarily. I think it came up in a discussion about keeping it separate.
I think, I think it was one of those when, when the finance committee was talking about renaming lines.
Because where I started was with last year's template, and I don't change that unless or until we make changes as we go through.
Right, and it wasn't separate last year.
No, so that's what I'm saying. I think it came up in a discussion, and it was.
But the dollars.
I think it's that it's, he would prefer.
Ron, you got one more item, 10 minutes after 11?
I do, and I think I'll be kind of free on it. It's under C, discussion of the letter for the state legislators. If there's one thing I have, it's late, so my ability to express myself is greatly diminished. But if there's one thing on this board that's irritated me, it's surprises. And we've had a number of them last year, and I think we've been making advances to working together better. But last week was very distressing for me. I learned in that meeting about correspondence that Paulette had sent out earlier. I had no, no idea. Here I am, I'm from the town, and, and I've learned about this email that went to these reps, because it's like, wait a second. I don't have this information. And then, so I asked for that information, and you forwarded it, and I, I, I think it was, I think it was poorly done. I think, Paulette, your handling of Rob and Sherman was, was very unprofessional. There are many times when someone, a guest comes before us that I might have a hard time with it. I tried, this was, this is like hammering that guest. And I, I called her the next day, and I said to her, this is for me personally. I'm sorry for the way you were treated in that meeting. She had no idea what she was walking into. And I was embarrassed for the town, for this board, and, and really, really concerned. I was embarrassed. I mean, it was, it was tough. So I went through some research on my own, and this is a lot, this is seven pages. I haven't copied anyone. It's just at this page. In the past, I might have copied people, but I've, this is a gentle touch. But I think we might have been in violation as a board of some methods. And how that letter was sent out without my knowledge by Paulette as a select board member is a reflection on me. is a reflection on me, like this board. And I see it as a clear violation. I want to talk about this more. I don't want to just drop it and say, "Sorry," or this or that. I need to understand from you guys, if you agree with me that this was a violation. And if we can come to terms on it, and I don't mean crazy terms, but I want to see repeats of this. I really don't. I think this was something that was poorly done, poorly handled, and ethically irresponsible. It's just my opinion. I haven't solicited anyone's opinion on this at all. I did talk to the guy at the desk of the Commission at the state level, but I didn't use anyone's names or anything on this. Because I had questions on kinship, if you're related to people versus unrelated and you're advancing someone else's agenda whether you're related, unrelated, for money, not for money. And of course, I know they don't give you an opinion letter in writing. So it's all verbiage over the phone. But I did look through some seminars that have been provided to me by previous select board members and some that I have gotten. And I went back and looked at my agenda too that I had to take. And I think it's a serious concern. So it's not fair to ask you to respond to this now because I haven't made the facts that I'm presenting. But I do want to get this on the table. I want to talk about it. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But I need to hear from you guys on it. So I'd like this also attached to the minutes of the document. And would be glad to discuss it in the future and come to a resolve on it.
Ron, is this gonna be like May of 2012? When you wrote seven pages and sent it to the AG and we got off to a very...
No, it's not like May because I didn't send it to the AG and I didn't send it to the Ethics Commission.
But it was, the one you did in May was full of all kinds of...
Well, I don't write a memorandum without substantiating my thoughts. Anyone can throw out a thought. But I substantiate it in a way that I think is defensive. And so if it's like the one I sent to the AG where I was defending myself against allegations from you, maybe it is that way. But it did go to the Ethics Board and it did go to the AG. So it's just before us. And if I can't talk openly in a meeting to the two of you, I have no place to go but to the state. So I'm concerned about it. And it has to do also with the agenda of the Ashfield House. When I saw the vehemence with you came after Robin, it was so obvious in my mind, and only people speaking, that there's a personal agenda going on here. And then I asked in this at the very end, that you submit a public disclosure statement. Like I did for when my wife was on the Park Commission. I said, "I'm related to her. If anyone has a problem with this, let me know." Look, you drive around town with Suzanne Corbett and Deb Nicholson. Everyone sees you on the street together, very, very close. And it would be easy. They talked about in the law what a fair-minded person, not another select board member, but what a fair-minded person would think faced with the same situation. So please don't push it. I'm looking for your response to this, okay? And I haven't gone to the State Ethics Commission. If we go crazy with it at this level, I'll fire it up to the State Ethics Commission because I think there's an issue. And I wouldn't be bringing it up if I didn't think there was an issue. So that's all I had to say. And I thought we might have a chance to talk about it tonight a little bit more. But there's a lot that...
Well, it seems like it's, I mean, it's not seven, seven pages that you wrote as much as the attachments.
It's two pages I wrote and it's the emails attached.
I would really want to read it, but I need to, I mean, this quarter after a month. But my, my only point in bringing that up last week is that I, talking with Robin and it came up that she had to answer all these questions and forward me the answers. Well, part of that whole string of emails, as you can see, was the timestamp. And I just thought it was odd that, and that's why I brought it up, is that it was odd that you had given it to us at 11:00, 10:30 at night, a copy of it, but you didn't disclose that you had sent it at 1:30. I don't have a problem with you sending it forward. I think the problem that I had or what was curious to me is that on so many things, that people are held to such high standards and that you have forgotten about that or omitted that piece of information that you had sent it on. And it's curious, you know, it's funny in the whole deal. I mean, it really is kind of humorous that nobody wants to hear the answer that Robin Sherman did. So we go all the way around to the state legislators and what do the legislators do? They send it directly to Robin Sherman to write all the answers so they know...
They get it right.
So they know that the response is correct. So, I mean, it's funny how these things go round and round and round. As far as being way off base, it certainly is curious. And that you omitted that. It seems like the rest of us are held to very high standards. And we have to hold...
In the future, my correction will be, I will be sure anything I forward does not have Select Board under my name. And anybody who wants to find me, I can look at the Town's website and figure out that for themselves. But I will not put Select Board. I was trying to be transparent as to who I was, but that may not have been the best thing to do. So I just would not put that under my name. And then that eliminates that part of the word.
Well, yeah, it certainly eliminates that. But as far as any of us getting work done, you know, getting businesses at Town. You know, we, you know, all of us running to people in Town and say, geez, what about this? What about that? You know, I mean, we should all be able to bring that up and discuss it if it's pertinent. And at some point, we have to decide amongst ourselves if it is or isn't pertinent to what we're discussing. And certainly, this memorandum, we would have to put on a future agenda to discuss in more detail.
I think so.
But I think we need to just come to terms with it. Come and turn to it.
Does it not bother either of you that what I read to you in that meeting, which is really what had me upset, is the document from HRA saying who they were and what they did? She sat there and said, "That's not true." And it was their document. Now, I don't really know what you want to call it. And I'm not about to sit here and say, "Oh, they lied." But it was so untrue. Yes, I was excited. We're dealing with people who she's saying it's wrong and it's her own document from her own office. And neither one of you seems to be terribly concerned about that.
Well, I would be concerned if it was done in a manner that I thought was fair to the guests. And I just thought that your approach to her put me off. I mean, if the whole mission is to be effective, you have to be effective at communicating too. And here's this person who came before us from an information point of view. And it's like she's being interrogated with rapid-fire questions. And I'm saying, "This isn't proper. She's not absorbing anything. These people are getting, aren't absorbing anything. We're not absorbing anything." What we should have done is if everything she gave us was wrong, I should have acknowledged that before we met her, first of all. We should have. So we could say, "There's credibility she gave with you, Ron." We spoke with a single voice, but when you went off with all this knowledge that I had no clue of what you were talking about and Dave was working with you from the audience, then it was, it was obvious that it was...
No, that's not fair. That's inflammatory. He wasn't working with me.
You don't think so?
He came to his own conclusions based on what I was saying. I hadn't talked to him about that. Well, okay, so...
Well, I...
All right, before we finish then, bear with me. I was given a statement and asked to read it to this board. And I think in all fairness, I should. You want to all go down this road. Says, "I would like to point out the dual standards being applied by members of the Ashfield Select Board concerning a decision to act independently. Ron, you approached the Attorney General for advice regarding open meeting law eva- excuse me, open meeting law violations without first bringing your intentions to the board. And Tom, you recently discussed Ashfield House issues with HRA Executive Director Robin Sherman, first by phone and then in person during a subsequent appointment. You also contacted Town Attorney Donna McNichol as well. These individual decisions were not the first time either of you have acted without the board being aware. So why is it when a woman acts without first consulting other board members, there is an immediate and unwarranted backlash? And your reactions are your reactions based on gender bias or concerns regarding the Ashfield House ownership structured, set up by RDI and HRA? Is the negativity, excuse me, is the negativity due to PR fog and the Town's involvement with and responsibility for current conditions in the building? Gentlemen, the Ashfield House is a mixed finance, low-income housing project that meets the definition of public housing according to UDD. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund and housing stabilization funding, the majority of permanent financing for that project are subsidized by taxpayers. Call it what you will, but Ashfield had a responsibility when the property changed hands to ensure compliance with applicable codes, state and federal financing regulations, architectural access and so on. And if this town held the prior owners of the Ashfield House apartments to standards in effect at that time, all the more reason to avoid the appearance of impropriety by equitable enforcement. May I also remind you both, the actions you so vehemently disapproved of would not have been necessary had the Select Board and the Board of Health not denied subsidized housing tenants the right to document concern. Ron's resolution prevented tenants from not only getting an appointment with the Select Board, but Patina Urin has had to fight for both accurate minutes and to have her documents entered into the record. The current status of affairs and the need to forward concerns to those working at the state level is undeniable proof in this case that local and regional government has failed miserably. Worse yet, it appears some local, regional and state officials have conspired to remove the rights of a class of citizens based on their receipt of public assistance, state and federally subsidized housing. Let me remind you both, had the Ashfield Board of Health, along with other elected and appointed officials, carried out their sworn duties and upheld their legal, moral and professional responsibilities, we would not be here now. Instead, we have a Town-Employed Health Agent forward documentation to the attorney representing HRA for the Building Code of Appeals hearing in December of 11th, where a pound, Town submitted, supported, falsified paperwork appeared that no one has answered for. Is this like the Dunn's number issue where we just pretend it never happened? I find it all very unsettling. And if it takes sending documentations and questions to the state and federal level in order to get answers, then that will happen. Sincerely, Deborah Nicholson. It was preceded by a letter. Dear Ms. Lukar, as you are well aware, I am prevented from bringing issues to the Select Board per the resolution created by Vice Chair Ron Kohler. I am therefore asking you to include my statement attached for the record during tonight's Select Board meeting. It is the only way to enter my concerns in those of other affected tenants at the Ashfield House of power that Towns publicly subsidize low-income housing in order to document. Thank you in advance. For your support, Deborah Nicholson. It's dated today. I've done what I was asked to do.
Well written.
It was not ordered to the state reps.
Well written.
I couldn't agree with you, but it is what it is.
Ron, I would like to say, since the time you submitted your document last May, where in the end, you chose the words to call me a liar.
Finish your sentence.
And even though we were found guilty of that open meeting law violation.
My answer, I mean, conditions of...
You said at the meeting, you still believed, believed that you were right.
Yeah, but I haven't appealed the decision, did I?
No, I'm just saying.
The Town, I allowed it to...
I see.
And are you right all the time, Paulette?
No, no. What I'm saying is, you had, you wanted to defend yourself to the AG and express yourself. That was fine. What was your motive for calling me a liar?
Well, you have to read, if you want, I will take the same letter, which is at least as long. And you're taking words totally out of context. I use words like entrapment and other words like that. And I built an argument. And all you're doing is picking individual words out. So I won't get into that now, but this is a separate issue, Paulette. And I could be wrong on this. I could be right. I'm doing it differently because I'm sharing with you. I have no other place to share. And if, if we engage each other in a real aggressive way, it's just gonna be easier to send it to the State Commission. Because you know something? I am duty-bound to report ethical issues. What I am doing by sharing with you and not going to the State Ethics Commission is a little bit weird. But I believe in human relationships and I want to get through this. And if that email that Deb Nicholson had sent to me, asking me to forward it to the reps, I would say, first of all, you forward it to the reps yourself. You're a private individual living in this town and I cannot advance your agenda without permission, especially signing with a Select Board member and watching it go through this superdust email loop that discredits all of us in that manner. I can't believe you did that. And to know that you're her personal friend, along with Suzanne Corbett, former owner.
I'd send it for anybody.
I'd send it for anybody, but with Select Board on the bottom?
No, I will never put that there again.
Well, here's, here's what I'm gonna, you know, I have never gone back to look at this document that was in May that has caused all of the havoc. I mean, I need to dig that up and take a look at it. I've never gotten that far. But in the five months, five months since I've been here, tomorrow will be five months from the February election, is that I think we've gotten on the right track in so many ways. You know, we're getting past this minute stuff. I mean, at least they're getting approved. Right, we had the word from the Attorney General that that needed to be taken care of. We're moving forward on that. We have done great work. There are times, up until about a half hour ago, where I am saying, man, we get a lot of worthwhile work done. But all it takes on this board is one sentence, one phrase, one glance up at the Ashfield House and everything just falls apart. And it's just, at the very least, it's unfortunate that that one establishment causes so much rift in the entire community. Because everybody knows what's going on here. Every, today with the information and us getting the minutes out and trying to add as much detail and with the videos that are available, it's, it's, it really is amazing that there are times when I'm feeling, man, we're taking care of the dam, we're taking care of the retaining wall, you know? The police department's got their speed trailer coming. We go down through this whole list of really things in the town that are worthwhile, that we're charged with taking care of. And, but that Ashfield House just seems to just tear the whole place apart. And it's, it's, it's much bigger than just unfortunate, but that's the word I'll use today. I'm not gonna address Deb's letter now, you know? Talking about me going to meeting, of course, the Chairman goes to meet. The Chairman goes and gets a little background from the Town Council. Certainly, the chairman, if the chairman doesn't have latitude to do that without getting offended me to the rest of the board, then, then the chairman doesn't mean a damn thing. But, but you can review that. Probably, I, I don't know if wrong would. I think we should all get copies of that, and Paulette probably already, you have one that you kept for yourself?
I think you.
So, so there's one for the record, and so if, when you get a chance this week, if you could email a copy to Ron and I, just so we have something to take up that three minutes with, that we can review it and try to take care of those, any of those concerns, we can do that. But it really is, it really is an unfortunate deal that that one subject causes such problems and really destroys the relationships that I think we have going on getting the rest of the town's business up. But it is eleven thirty-five. Is there a motion to adjourn? Shaloo, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At eleven thirty, call it eleven thirty-five. It might be a record. I don't think we've been here this late.